No, but do we have to do a public comment?
Oh, he did skip that, sorry. Thank you, Harvey. Is there any public comment on non-agenditized items? Paul?
Paul Savage, resident of Mountain Village. I'm here to talk about the inclusion illusion. It's basically systemic ableism prolific throughout this region and the gaslighting making us believe otherwise. If we go way back in history to the early 90s after the ADA was first was first announced, Janet Sellar became the most prolific adaptive sports rights advocate in US history. She was quadriplegic and an avid kayaker. She worked for the US Forest Service as a National Accessibility Program Manager for nearly three decades. When the Forest Service approached her, they said, "You know, we're all into this. We all believe we need disability rights and the two things that we need throughout the US Forest Service is to make the visitor centers accessible so the cripples can get in and make the bathrooms accessible so the cripples can get in." You know, the hell with the forest, they're there, you know, as long as they can go to the bathroom. Look at the visitor center, there's plenty of pictures inside showing what they can do. She said, "You know, that's setting the bar pretty low, guys." She went on to do a lot of accessible trails throughout the US Forest Service as well as made a lot of boat ramps wheelchair accessible. She also wrote the book Accessibility Guidebook for Ski Areas Operating on Public Lands, which is basically a layman's guide to not breaking the ADA and other disability laws. When you break any of the laws in this book, which is clearly and simply stated as it is layman's guide, by definition, it is a hate crime. Fast forward to 35 years today, the bar locally is still incredibly low. I've been here for 10 years and have championed many disability rights issues. After last fall, when I spoke to this council about disability rights, while Oscar pushed this board to act, did council act quickly to correct issues that were 35 years overdue and violated federal law? No. Instead, they look for grants to fund free consulting. The general fund was only for important items like a reindeer petting zoo or the livestream beaver cam. So now we hire a free consultant and who did they decide to partner with locally? TASS, Telluride Adaptive Sports Program. This country has a long history of so-called experts who are not part of the discriminated class deciding what is best for those that are in that discriminated class. That's why we had the Southern Compromise when a bunch of old white men decided that black people should be counted as three-fifths human. Appointing TASS to correct local disability issues is like hiring Chuck Hornig to be a sexual assault victim, Scott Slur. If TASS can't overcome their own systemic ableism issues within their program, why would we trust them to correct ours?
Thank you, Mr. Savage.
We also have Jonathan Greenspan.
Jonathan?
Hi, I'm Pete. Did you miss me?
Always Jonathan.
That's right.
You know the rules on public comment, correct?
What's that?
You know the rules on public comment, right?
Yes, I do. And so I'll be mostly quick. Jonathan Greenspan at Sovereign Nation, 103 Spring Creek Drive, eighth council member, small in statute of district, but loud in sound. But nevertheless, I got two things, but one of them is procedural. The first one I'm just going to make pretty easy as far as the TMBOA vote coming on right now. It's open. I'm going to throw my support into Paul Zoidas as well as Steve Brzezinski for the commercial seat. So for any of those that are listening, Paul has displayed true leadership in diving into the documents. He's been here for over 20 years and he has been a resident here, or as you say, a citizen here for quite some time and participating in so many different things as well as Steve Brzezinski, knowing all aspects of the village. So anyways, procedural question. Are we going to be allowed to talk, ask questions about the budget or is it just going to be an overview of accepting the budget first reading today? I'm not clear on that. I'm in my car, that's why I can't really read it.
We'll take public comment.
Okay, super. Then I'll wait for the other thing. Thanks for that clarification, Paul. That's it. There you go. Looks like you need some people to sit in seats over there anyway, so I'll show up here in three or four hours, okay?
Okay. Any other public comment? Anything online?
Nothing online.
Okay. All right. Should we move to... Oh, the consent agenda, we need to approve the minutes.
We need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next agenda item is the bagger and updates.
Yeah, well Elizabeth is coming up here for the bagger. On department updates, we'll take any questions. Within the department updates, we do discuss some discussions that we've been having with TSG and I just want to say that we have had some really productive discussions regarding snowmaking and the snowmaking rate study, the lift tax and parking. And I'm really grateful to TSG staff for those productive and collaborative conversations. Specifically, I want to thank Marty Whitmore, Tom Richards, Carson Taylor, Ryan Burke and Steve Swenson for their really hard work with their counterparts, including myself here at Town Hall. So thank you. Are there other questions?
Just one, I guess on item C on the consent agenda, there was a consideration of approval of the grant for the zero emission vehicle. Is that something?
You guys just voted on the consent agenda, so.
Oh, okay, so that's part of it? Okay, all right, sorry.
All good.
All right.
So anything beyond that, we're happy to answer questions in the department updates.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I don't recall hearing this before, but there was a little blurb about e-bike program, you know, studying it and so forth. And I was just trying to understand, what's the philosophy or thought process as far as... It says that they're looking at a joint program with Telluride. So what's the concept that's being thought there? And the reason for my question is, and I'll just state my perspective. I always think of these e-bikes as, you know, going all over the city, you know, going everywhere. But I don't necessarily think that we want to promote riding e-bikes between the two towns unless I'm missing something. I don't think we want them on the highways and stuff. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand why they would want to join, you know, do a joint program.
That's a great question. Harvey, so this was a request from the Transit Department and we received a grant award to do a technical readiness plan for a community e-bike share program. And it was done in collaboration with the town of Telluride in San Miguel County. So it explores the Telluride region, so it looks at the town of Telluride as well as Lawson Hill and Mountain Village. With this plan, those are some considerations that they are going to include in the plan. So it will be everything from a cost structure, community engagement, that's forthcoming, whether or not it makes sense to have one because of the infrastructure concerns that you just mentioned, safety aspects, all kinds of things. So this phase is just a plan to see if it's even desired or feasible in the area.
I'll just say, Harvey, I share your concern about putting people on the road, particularly on 145. When I read this, maybe it's a bad assumption, but I assumed that it would only work if we had, you know, a connector trail between Mountain Village and Ballard River. And then depending on the type of bike, you know, potentially, when could we use it to get back?
Yeah, I agree. It's, yeah, we don't have roads, so that's the issue in my mind.
Yeah, and so there are four locations within Mountain Village that are being proposed as well as additional locations in Telluride and then one in Lawson Hill with the potential to expand to Bridalville Trailhead. With this project, the way it's structured is that it needs to go to each council for basically consideration and consideration of going to implementation. And so it's structured in a way that if the town of Telluride wants to proceed with it, but Mountain Village decides that we're either not interested or not ready, then we don't have to do that. That'll be a second phase. So right now, we're just in the exploratory phase of putting this plan together. From my understanding, it was based off of feedback that we received in the Trails Master Plan as well as some comments in the comp plan about exploring e-bikes.
Is this like an e-bike share program?
Yes, so there would be docking stations at different locations and then there would be this whole business model around servicing them, providing them to the public for a cost and having that be another option for micro mobility.
Lauren, has SMART weighed in at all? I do recall that there was previously a grant awarded to SMART for this same or similar project and a community e-bike share program and there were similar concerns raised, especially in Mountain Village, that it may not be appropriate timing, at least with the state of our e-bikeable trails.
Yeah, that's a great question, Marty. SMART was engaged during the application process, so they are in support of the project and is continuing essentially what they had worked on during COVID and then that project got halted because of the pandemic and other, I think, considerations. We are in the process right now of developing a community engagement survey. And so with that, we'll have some events and they will certainly be invited to participate in the virtual opportunities as well as the in-person.
Great question.
I would encourage you to, as you go through this study process, is to benchmark other mountain communities that may have implemented a plan and what were the pros and what were the cons?
Yes, and that's part of the plan. So we actually, we contracted with a company called Steer Mobility and they have two consultants and one of their consultants is an e-bike implementation company and they've done the same program in Breckenridge and the Vale Valley. And so we will be taking from their experiences to inform this project and the consultant's also talking with other e-bike implementation companies to add to that information.
The consultants don't operate the e-bike program, do they?
So Drop Mobility, which is their subconsultant, does operate the programs, but they're not, again, we don't need to go with them. They're going to provide a couple of different options, but that was a consideration when we got their proposal.
It's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, isn't it? All right. Any other comments? Not on e-bikes. Oh, go ahead, Harvey.
No, go ahead. I have a different topic, so you go first and then I'll go.
I do too. The benches being installed over at the meadows and the trails, are those are what I was requesting or?
Yes.
Or do they have plaques?
I've seen one bench that does have a plaque. I have not seen the rest, so I'll have to leave the rest to Lowry to weigh in on and unfortunately, he's not here today.
Road trip for benches.
Yeah.
Another field trip. Yes. I had a question on water for ski ranches. You expect to be 60% complete. I thought we were gonna, I thought we would be 100% complete. Am I wrong?
So we are about 100% complete of what we're going to do this year.
That's kind of moving the goalposts.
Well, so our plan was to do a much larger project. We got a late start on it. Once we got into the project, we kind of reassessed and we thought, all right, this is probably the chunk that we can bite off and actually chew and swallow. So there is 40% of that originally bid out project that we're not going to complete this year.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Okay. Different topic, different topic. In the staff report, it reminds us that we're about to begin the biennial de-restricting compliance processes. I would like to throw out for consideration by if anyone else is interested, not for this cycle, but in preparation of a cycle two years ago, I think it'd be worthwhile to just review all of our rules and definitions and make sure that we're up to date. Well, I mean up to date, I mean, you know, for the year 25, now that 25. Just to make sure that if there's anything we want to modify or re, or clarify or anything like that, that we're, you know, have plenty of time and ready for the next biennial. And I would serve on that work group if anyone else is interested.
The.
I'll just weigh in that it's probably a little, it might, I mean, being someone who has to go through that process, it's very straightforward. It's, at least the last time I did it, it's pretty user friendly and I think that the staff has, you know, the last, two years ago, they did go through that process of streamlining everything, getting a process and procedure that's, you know, takes out unnecessary steps and I'm not sure, you know, if it really makes sense to do all that all over again.
Well, I don't know.
Especially, especially being so soon to the deadline, which is coming right up.
Well, no, I said not for this cycle, not for this cycle. No, I just think that, you know, we probably should have a conversation to discuss how do we define working in the region, in Arwood School District, any definitional things that we think might be needing updating just so that staff has clear rules to apply, you know, for the next time.
And if I may interject, Harvey, this is Catherine. I've been working on the form stack. It'll be very similar to the process two years ago, Marty, but we have certainly streamlined it a little bit more for both staff and the public and that is expected to be launched tomorrow.
So any interest by anyone else or am I the only one?
I think I'd like to hear from Drew. Sorry, I think I'd like to hear from Drew whether those definitions need updating because I seem to remember that this happened two years ago.
Drew's. So I guess I have a question as to whether these definitions are essentially written into the deed restrictions and therefore aren't really available to be updated.
Yeah, so I can address some of that. We have deed restrictions that are applicable to much of our property within Mountain Village and once it's affixed to that property, it's hard to amend without owner consent and that's a pretty onerous process. Within those deed restrictions, there certainly are terms that probably mean something different than they did when the deed restriction was first adopted by council. And so we would have to work with David and Drew to determine where there's room to provide those definitions through council action and where some of those definitions are simply fixed. And I think Drew is now here to weigh in on if there are any definitions that are in fact problematic at the moment.
We are currently going through our community housing guidelines and those have a number of definitions in them that will impact how we manage deed restrictions going forward. So our attorneys are taking a look at that right now and making sure that we're cleaning up all of that, all those definitions.
But to Harvey's point, those won't happen for this round, right? Or they're going through it?
So we're going through it right now. I anticipate that you'll see our community guidelines that you're meeting in December for a work session that we can discuss. And if there's something specific in there, we can try to address it. And I apologize, I was in a conversation and missed kind of the first part of the questions.
It's, and like Marty, I went through this process myself two years ago. In fact, when I read it in the packet, I was like, wait, I thought, I just did that. And the process was very easy in comparison to the time before this last time that I did it. And I think the forms that Catherine has mentioned are all online and the process was relatively easy to go through, actually.
Yeah, everything will be online this time around. You should be getting notices sent out this, here this week. Actually, I think they're going to go out tomorrow.
Yeah, and my focus is not the process, which I think we have made a lot of strides in making it, making it, you know, easier and so forth. I was more focused on the substantive definitions.
And when I went through it, I was comparing it actually to my own deed. And so I suppose when I say it was easy, it was easy to also refer kind of the language that I was completing on the forms to my own deed restriction. But it's, but it's nice to hear that the attorneys are re-reviewing.
Yeah, and to Paul's point too, you know, those pre-existing deed restrictions are going to be somewhat problematic just simply because of the way they're written and they're, they run with the covenant on the property. So it has to be something that an owner would want to basically accept and I'm not sure that everybody's going to be wanting to accept changes to their deed restriction.
The Zamboni at the ice skating rink, is that a shared cost with the Hotel Madeline if it dies?
All right, we do have a cost sharing agreement with the Madeline for certain items and I will have to check on where the Zamboni falls in that waterfall.
Because it's, it's the one and only, right?
Yes, we don't have a backup, right?
And it hasn't been replaced?
No.
Okay. That's where JD gets to skate out.
Right.
Yeah, we get the curling blow.
We're ready when you are.
JD, I have a question. Go ahead, Scott, go ahead.
I have a few. The report on, the IT report, a question about Starlink. I didn't see it mentioned there and I know in the past that there has been some talk about installing Starlink as a network backup and also providing some sort of emergency Starlink Wi-Fi at grocery stores so that if everything goes down, people can go there to be able to access the internet. I was wondering if there's been any progress on that.
Yeah, there's good news. So the Starlink is actually installed and running in council chambers right now and the outdoor AP is, should be installed this week or next week. One thing we all need to remember is Starlink has limited bandwidth, so therefore it'll be limited users that can connect. It can't, like, it couldn't even service everyone in this meeting right now. So, but we would have services there. We also have two mobile Starlinks. Chris Brody has one and I have one. We also have a Starlink down at the head end shop area and that actually feeds through our network that can also be used for emergency services. And then we have another one for Public Works.
Oh, that's great. That's great to hear. Is that something, on the one hand, I'm thinking that the, you know, having that available in an emergency is something that our residents would want to know about. On the other hand, I'm sensitive to the bandwidth limitations. Is this something we would want to promote to our residents or at least make them aware of, assuming they're not watching this council meeting?
I mean, that's a great question. One of the things I do do is all these Starlink connections are active and actually running different services throughout the town because we want to make sure they're operational when we need them to work. And so, I mean, I don't know with Chris on the continuity of operations, what to do there, but open to any ideas, you know, if we want to let the community know or if we had an event, perhaps that's when we have the community connect for those that need to connect. I'm not sure. That's, it's really up to us to decide. The infrastructure is in place.
Great.
Do you have a reduction?
Or Catherine, on how we let people know. Out of an emergency thing, I'm just, you know, I'm still scarred from this meeting I missed because the cable was cut coming up the valley and both my cell service and my internet went out and I couldn't join the meeting and it's really lasting ramifications. So not a personal thing for me, but I love the idea that we can provide a backup for our residents if all else fails.
Scott, you bring up a very good point. One of my goals for early '26 is to both communicate out our evacuation zones once we switch over to our new public alert system and then also connect with Chief and Jim on sort of, for lack of a better term, I'm calling a blackout plan. Like what, communicating out to the public of, here's what we plan to do if we are out of internet or power or, you know, go through, other communities have done this where we say we will post messages at a board at Town Hall and really, we all have to do that work internally before it's communicated to the public, but it's my goal in early '26 to get that out before our next potential fire season.
Great, thank you. Since you're there, Catherine, I have one other, I guess it's more of a suggestion, but the Four Seasons project, it's a website where they post monthly, weekly updates on how the construction is going, but it's not actually very easy to find and I was wondering what you would think about the appropriateness of, I think, some sort of a link on our tapping page to, so people could access those construction updates.
What page are you suggesting? Because it is on our, I'd have to look at the page. I think it's upcoming or construction projects page. Is there another spot that would make sense?
So you can, so if you go, I'll check that.
Yeah, if you go to planning. Yeah. But we can figure out some.
You have to go to what?
You go to planning and then construction projects, but we can maybe figure out.
Amy's going to email you the link.
Yeah.
I don't even know how to get to planning. Is that under doing business? Oh, yeah, doing business.
Doing business, planning.
Planning, construction projects, and then, yep, there it is, I see it. Okay. All right, thank you. I've been finding it before, now I know how to find it.
Hey Scott, this is Jim. There's one more thing I wanted to add that Catherine touched on. If we did have an event, Chris Brody and I have worked hard with T-Mobile and AT&amp;T that have emergency cellular on wheel services and things like that that they could bring into the area if there was an incident. Now, the question is how fast and what that looks like is a different thing, but as part of the packages that we've signed up for, that's included.
Just, just on the Starlink, does that have a battery backup?
Yeah.
It does, okay.
Yeah, so the, yes, and one of them, two of them are on generators. So they could go beyond the life of a battery. The one at Town Hall, if we got into an extended situation like that, we're bringing in probably a generator to run lights and refrigerators and things like that for the soft area here so that, you know, so we can continue.
Do we have any more questions, keeping time in mind?
Are we going to the bagger or not yet?
I think we're going to the bagger.
Two quick things on the bagger. One relates to building and planning and it's really not the bagger per se, but you know, each month I look at the permits and, you know, reviews and so forth, and I just wanted to ask. It looks, it looks sort of, it's trending a little bit down, but I was really just trying to ask with my budget head hat on. You know, what are we seeing? I view the permits as sort of our early indicator of what's coming up in the next few years and I would just would like to ask Amy, you know, on a qualitative basis, not just the bag of numbers, but how do you feel about those? What do you see? Do you see any trends? Anything make you want to rethink what's in the '26 budget? Those kind of questions.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I've had this discussion with Elizabeth is that I don't, I don't know the best way to project these things, but what I can just sort of tell you from what I believe I'm seeing is that single family, new single family permits are probably down a little bit. But the valuations that we're getting on those projects that are going forward are bigger than we have projected in years past. So does it equal? I'm not sure. The other thing that I really am seeing is a lot more remodels than we've had in the past. And so I feel like as much as, you know, when you. as much as, you know, when you look at the number of planning applications for absolute new builds is slowing a little, but we seem to be filling in that schedule every month. So I, I don't know how to predict too much further than, you know, than what gets handed to me every day, but it, it feels like it's just sort of flat if, you know, if maybe potentially down a little. I don't see a, I don't see an incredible drop.
Can't you, can't you look at, so Mountain Village is 30 years old. So, so stuff that was done 30 years ago is ripe for remodel.
Yeah. And that's what I'm seeing is that those remodels are really, and they're not like remodels used to be somewhat insignificant value wise, but the remodels that we're seeing right now are there, there's much as what people were spending a few years ago to build a new house. So it, it feels to me like it's equaling out.
Okay.
I can relate to that.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and thanks for the question. I mean, really I just view that as the canary. So, you know, I always ask the question of, you know, forward looking. Um, my other question relates to, if you've done, if, if, unless you have any more comments on that, my other question relates to overtime? If others have questions?
I don't have overtime, so.
I got, I know. So I, I always ignore overtime, but for some reason I looked at it this month and thought about it some more. Um, I guess a couple of questions. Is, is the overtime sort of focused on certain departments? And the reason why for my question is again, with a budget hat, but also, um, what is it telling us? I mean, is it, is there information there that we, that, you know, we need to learn about? Um, so my first question is, is, do you know if it's centered on certain departments? Or is it fairly spread around? I'm just curious.
The majority of overtime is in the gondola department. And it fluctuates quite a bit, um, during, uh, like for example, in holiday times, we don't staff to have, to be able to support holiday traffic all year. So you'll see big spikes in that. And the other times you'll see spikes are kind of at the end of the season when a lot of these kids leave early and go back to college or just decide that they're done here and leave. So we end up having the people that stick around and.
Yeah, so, so I was ignoring the gondola because that, that's not my concern. I was focused on, for example, this month, 427 hours of other non-gondola. And I was curious how that might be. And, and the reason for my question, again, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying if, if it's concentrated in certain departments, what is that telling us? If it's, if it's broad, maybe it tells us something different. So I'm just trying to get behind it and say, is there, is there, is it telling us something? And I start from the premise that some overtime is expected, but too much is telling the story. That's, that's my question.
And I will go back and look at it, what, what it was by department, but I would suggest that a, a, quite a few of those hours were in the water department.
Yeah.
Resulting from the major leaks that we had in the month.
Yeah, Harvey, you haven't been around the last couple of weeks, but yeah, we've had a few water main breaks here.
Yeah.
But, but that, but, but okay, but I will challenge that because that might be some of the numbers in October, but it's still 1,400 hours year to date. So that's not water needs. That's not water.
No, and, and Jamie, I'll ask Jamie to pull the year to date reports so we can take a look. I know that, um, Chambers has had some overtime with staff, with staffing down. So I would say probably the majority of this overtime is tied to, um, what we see in staffing issues, but I will get more information that, for that, for the next bagger, Harvey.
Yeah. And, and, and I'm not looking for super detail. I'm just trying to see if there's any trend there. Is it telling us that one or two departments had some staffing thing?
Yeah.
Maybe they just can't get the staff and that's the answer. Or, or, you know, what is it telling us? That's all I, that's super, not the numbers in detail, but are there, is there a story behind it that, that says, hey, what's, what's happening here? And that, that's the purpose of the question, just so we're clear. I'm not, I'm not looking for a 20-page report with, you know, everyone's hours, so.
No, but that's what we'll look at to figure out what's going on, but.
Yeah, just, just, just trends, that's all.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments on the bagger? No?
I didn't have a comment.
Yes.
Scott?
I, um, I didn't have any comments on the bagger, but I just wanted to say kudos for a couple of things. First of all, I'm really excited for the, the test borehole for the geothermal project, which is mentioned there. That's really cool. And then I also want to compliment our entire HR department for the smooth rollout of enrollment. Cause we made some changes this year and I was concerned it could go late and, and it didn't. And so I'm really appreciative of, of that whole department. Thank you.
JD, you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Oktoberfest?
Yeah, we'll give a quick Oktoberfest recap. Just gonna share my screen. Got a few visuals to go along with this, but.
Certainly do.
Just a, oh, where did that go? Okay. Um, yeah, just wanted to provide a, a short recap of the event. And, um, before I just go through a few quick slides here, um, just brief background, uh, through conversation, uh, and at the request of the Mayor Pro Tim and with support of council, we were asked to explore would it be possible to have an Oktoberfest event this fall? Um, there has been an Oktoberfest previously in the village, although it's been over a decade um, since the last Oktoberfest event happened. Um, and due to the short turnaround time, we did explore help from a third party um, to, you know, somebody that had a very established network and that could pull an event off like this in short notice. Um, so we did go through an approval process in the town's procurement code that is a waiver of quote process. Um, so we got necessary approvals on that. And then council, um, authorized through a supplemental appropriation, uh, total spend of up to $150,000 for this event. Um, and approximately 66,000 of that was spent on capital items that we can then reuse for future events, um, Oktoberfest or otherwise. So just a quick event overview. I know, uh, many of you were there and we'll see a few familiar faces in these slides, but, um, this was meant to be a traditional Oktoberfest event along with a beer garden under a traditional festival tent. Um, lots of wonderful food and beverage offerings, including beer steins, games and activities for adults and kids alike, and a live German brass, uh, band that came in from Utah. Primary objectives were really just to foster community inclusion. We wanted this to be a locals event in addition to hopefully providing a, a little bit of an economic bump during the, the mid-October period. Enhance vibrancy in the village and showcase some of our underutilized assets, in this case, the conference center. Um, just a few quotes on the screen. I mean, I can say there were a lot of locals at this event. It really did feel like a, a community building event. There were lots of familiar faces, got a lot of comments about how great it was to be able to see our friends and neighbors out at this event. Um, we had, you know, in the vein of enhancing vibrancy, 402, uh, total attendees. Um, 47% of those were from San Miguel County. 36% were from other regions in Colorado and 17% were out of state. Um, it's worth noting that some of the, the out of state markets or the larger out of state markets were Phoenix and Salt Lake City. So that indicates that we did get some drive traffic in um, for the event. And, uh, Denver was the, the largest in-state, out-of-region market. Um, at almost 60% of out-of-region attendees. It really was a great time. Um, the conference center, we utilized conference center staff in addition to, to bringing in some, um, outside staff and, uh, especially in the entertainment realm. Um, we did utilize conference center staff, uh, both in the kitchen and front of house. Um, I really just want to commend them. I think the TCC staff did a, a tremendous job. I think that, uh, chef, uh, Glidewell really knocked it out of the park with the food offerings, um, really felt authentic and was a great spread for those that um, joined us in the tent. And this is a quick recap on the numbers. Um, so we sold 141 tickets to the Beer Garden, 239, uh, tickets to the tent seating, 22 kids Oktoberfest tickets and 11 Stein refills. Um, Beer Garden tickets were $25, tent seating was $50. We purposely priced these at a point where we felt like it would be um, accessible to a wide range of the community. Uh, we did just over $16,000 in ticket sales revenues. Um, and the TTB calculated the economic impact for out-of-regions attendees at just over, or excuse me, just under $80,000. Um, and so when you compare that to our total, uh, not to exceed of 150,000, backing out the $66,000 in capital spend and then net of the ticket sales revenue, um, the net operating cost for the event was, uh, roughly $68,000. So we were right in line with that, um, out-of-region economic benefit.
But the out-of-region benefit was 79,000, right?
Correct. So we exceeded that net, net of ticket sales, net of the capital expense. If you look at just the operating portion, um, we exceeded that amount in out-of-region economic impact.
So for a first time event that was sort of quickly put together.
Yes.
I, I think this is a, a really good outcome.
Yeah, I think that we were all very pleased with it, both, uh, um, you know, ability for everything to come together on short notice and just the event itself. Um, I think it really did feel like a great community event. I think that everyone that attended had a great time. Um, you know, our third party did an exceptional job at just also producing that and bringing that concept to life. Um, and I also want to, you know, recognize Scott Pittenger and his team. You know, speaking of water breaks, we had a inline water break in the plaza that morning that they were, um, fortunately able to isolate and, uh, and, you know, the event was able to go off without a hitch. So happy to take any questions or comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that I'm impressed with, um, you know, where this landed on, you know, from an economic standpoint. I did get some feedback from community members, specifically business owners in the Mountain Village core areas, um, that would love to see in the future kind of a, a more, you know, re-envisioning of how those businesses could also be, um, lifted up that during, you know, during this event. So, you, you know, and I think that that's probably, um, already been discussed amongst all of you, but, you know, understanding that they'll have, there'll be a bunch more lead time for future events. Let's, let's think of ways that we can bring our existing businesses more into the fold with, uh, ways that, you know, they can also benefit from, from having all these folks be in our commercial core.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that comment. And that is something that we talk about a lot and, and trying to find, um, you know, the right ways to do that for these types of events. Uh, Molly is working on, um, TMBOA is working on producing an operate ski event for the winter. And we've been discussing um, the best ways to really include all of our businesses in those types of events. Um, whether that be, uh, you know, specific plaza areas or specific businesses that are highlighted. So that is certainly um, something that we want to continue to, um, you know, bring as part of these types of events is, is that ability.
You know, I attended the event. I didn't wear a lederhosen like some of my fellow council members, but I was there. I, I was really impressed. I thought it was a great event. I thought it was well-attended. I think it did wonders for the community. Some of the things like Marty that I did hear about, comments from businesses were, yes, to include them a little bit more. And then some comments relative to the RFP process, which you already, already touched on. And we are going to do that next time. But I think with the short time that we really provided to staff, it was wonderful. I was sad I couldn't take my mug home, so I would encourage to let people take their mug home.
Yes.
Next time or to purchase it. Uh, but it was, I think it was a great event. Thank you. Yeah, I think we ought to, you know, when you look at the weather this past fall, you know, if we all knew that November was going to be as nice as it was, you know, you could have left the gondola open a week or two longer and come up with another event. So I, I, I do think we should brainstorm. How do we get this shoulder season to be extended a bit more?
Yeah, absolutely.
But this was a great idea. Any other comments? Any feedback? Okay. Guess we're going to go to the budget. So we have to, I need a motion to convene as the metro district.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. In 2007, the town absorbed the dissolved Mountain Village Metro District and in so took on that general obligation debt. Um, so in your packet is the municipal debt service fund, which is reflective of that general obligation debt. Each year, uh, the council acting as the board of directors for the dissolved metro district approves this budget by resolution in December. Uh, but we hold our, um, yeah, public hearing. Thank you, Susan.
My readers.
She knew. Um, our public hearing in November on this budget. So this budget, all of this debt is supported by voter-approved mill levies. So we basically set the mill levy to reflect that debt service. Um, I will also say that you don't see the mill levy in this packet because like the budget, the metro district mill levy is, uh, approved by resolution. So you don't have to have two readings of that. So you'll see that in December as well.
Quick, quick question, Elizabeth.
Sure.
Do you recall, do you recall how much of this, what the balance is, how much debt is left?
Yes. So I believe that there's, um, oh gosh, I shouldn't do this. Uh, I believe there's about 6 million in debt left in total. Just under 5 million of that is parking structure and the remainder is self-supported debt, which means that debt service is paid for by TMBOA and the ski area under an agreement.
So there's, there's, there's more than 10 years left as far as the duration then, I guess.
Um, well, the, uh, I would have to get back to you on the maturity date. I forgot about, I've, I should have looked that up before coming in.
The reason for the question is it is a mill raise, mill levy, it is what taxpayers pay. And I'm just curious, um, whether you think it's worth, you know, a couple of hours' time to see if there's any way to reduce that cost, pay it off early, refinance, whatever. And I was really just, again, I happen to be bored and looking at this and, you know, we, we have a lot of, lot of pocket costs just in servicing the debt. You know, it's like four and a half percent of what we collect in taxes goes to administrative costs. Um, and so I'm, I'm just wondering whether on an all-in basis, there might be some way cheaper. Not making a project, but you know, maybe after the year end or something, it's worth just spring some, if, if we want to just keep it the way it is or if there's any alternative.
Sure. I will put that on the 2026 list. Thanks, Harvey. I, I will say that TMBOA and the resort have talked multiple times with such a small balance on their debt, their portion of this, uh, supportive debt. Um, to actually pay that off, um, I think it was a couple of years ago they were going to, but.
That was the time to do it when rates were so low. Yeah. Um, and we actually had a conversation with them last week, um, and it's still on their radar to do so.
Okay. Do we need a motion to approve this? Okay. Uh, any public comment on? Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. Need a motion to approve the?
It's just a public hearing.
Yeah, we will present the resolution at next month's meeting.
Oh, next meeting, okay. All right. Then we need to now reconvene as Mountain Village Town Council? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so October, we had a special meeting where we went basically line by line through the whole budget and got council's, uh, feedback and implemented, uh, direction from council on those items and also updated items that may have changed during that time. Uh, the biggest piece that we addressed was, um, the property tax mill levy credit. Council wanted to see property taxes increase no more than 10%. Um, and so that brought revenues down by about 1.2 million, um, which we were then directed to find savings and expenditures so that we would have a neutral effect on the general fund budget, meaning no, no surplus, no deficit. There were several other items that affected the budget. So in all, we had 2.1 million in, and I don't, I'm not sure the best word to use, but negative adjustments to the budget. And that would be um, decreases in revenue such as the property tax revenue. And in addition, And in addition, several projects are being moved into next year and that would have created a deficit in next year's budget, along with a few additional expenditures. When we got done with open enrollment, health insurance is up just a little bit based on people's elections, as well as chief had evidence software package that council approved and just some other slight increases. So those, those totaled 2.1 million. So we found 2.6 million dollars in cuts to the general fund and general funded supported funds, which happened through transfers in the general fund so that we could have that neutral general fund budget. Some of the largest changes were we, if you'll remember, we had, we have a million dollars in the budget for widening country club and widening a double eagle for a pedestrian and bike lane. And if we are not able to secure the support, half of that support from TMBOA, those projects will likely not move forward next year. We also, the housing department went back and re-reviewed their illian preliminary expenses for next year and feel that based on the contracts that are in place now and the directives or what council wants to see accomplished in the next year, they could do that at significantly less than they had originally had in there. So we had that cut. We're also looking at additional, more effective ways to use the yes program funding. So that has been removed from the budget. If, if something comes forward, we'll come to council for potentially a supplemental The town manager budget, the consulting budget was another big cut. There is no longer a contract next year for additional consulting on the town of Mountain Village and TMBOA gondola sharing program. That's not to say cost sharing in the sense of the project outside of SMART. So gondola station planning, a majority of that happened this year, so the expenses will go down quite a bit next year. Aside from that, you know, we were able to reduce our wellness dollars when we were re-offered the merchant pass and that was helpful. And then basically just some cuts across the board to certain programs. So all in all, included in this packet is a general fund budget with a $0 change net surplus or deficit. But I will say, when you look at the schedule that shows the town, the general fund and general fund supported funds, you will see that we are still in a combined deficit of about 2.1 million dollars next year.
But on the general fund by itself, basically the operating P and L of the town. We've reef, we will refund a million, a little over a million dollars to.
1.2.
1.2 million to the property taxpayers.
By reducing the mill levy for this year, correct?
And we're at break even.
Yeah. So we basically, there's a few things going on next year and this was a, you know, council's decision to have a temporary mill levy credit to relieve some of the strain of what taxpayers are going to pay next year. And doing that in a year where we're expecting a sales tax decline took quite a bit of work. So basically, it is important to mention that for the first, you know, million dollars in valuation, let me pull this number up. I believe the town of Mountain Village's share of that, the general operating levy for taxes paid in this year was about $830 out of $3,900 total bill on the first million dollars. So while your credit will limit that increase in the town of Mountain Village share to $83 for the first million and $88 for each additional million, there are a lot of other levying entities and I'm not quite sure who is, who has their mills restrained by statute in growth limitations or by governing documents. So the town of Mountain Village is about, you know, less, less than a quarter of your total tax bill. So it's important for our constituents to remember that piece.
Right. But I think it's showing fiscal discipline.
Yeah, exactly. I know, I, I also provided what the changes were in the budget, just a summary between October and the current in the general fund. And I'm not sure if anybody had any specific questions on those. But a couple of other items, the grants and contributions detail was also added to your packet. That is voted on as a whole with the budget, but council can discuss those allocations. And I'd also like to discuss at this point, the fee resolution that's included in your packet, because if council wants to make any adjustments to the proposed fees, then we'll go back and amend that. So I guess we should start with general questions on the budget and the changes in budget that I can answer, and then maybe move on to grants and contributions if you have any questions, and then finally discussing fees.
I think, I think the first comment I'd like to make is really more of a thank you because I know how arduous it is when you think you're done with your budget and suddenly we tell you, go back and cut. And I'm impressed that you guys, I didn't think you would be able to come up with 2.6 million.
Well, I think that it's a testament to the entire staff here who really took that seriously and understands that, you know, the council wants to position us in the best possible way for potentially a year where we might see some revenue declines. So the, the entire staff came together and said, I think I can do without this. I think I can do without that. We can amend this without amending their goals and programs for next year. So I think that's really a testament to the, the team here.
Well, thank you. It's a lot of hard work to go back and redo your budget.
Oh, it never ends. We do a supplemental almost every.
Yeah. But I think, I think we did it, I think the staff did it in the right way. I mean, there are two ways to do it. You just say 10% across board, everybody cut their budget and we elected not to do that. So you go back, look at areas with both in capital and expense that you can cut, anything that hits cash flow and, and you guys work through it. I mean, it is, it is a really big number. I think since I've been on council, that's probably the biggest cut we've, we've, we've taken.
Well, and I will say some of them were a little easier than others, such as, you know, the town manager consulting with the gondola. When we went back and sat down with TMBOA, we realized that that wasn't something to move forward. But yes, I would say that the staff in general worked really collaboratively. There were people that were able to cut their budgets more than others, so.
When we were discussing before, there was some discussion about the wildfire mitigation and TMBOA's contribution and that, how that might play into this. So did that all resolve since the last conversation?
It is a work in progress. They have had their second of three budget meetings. There's currently a million dollars allocated to Forest Health for next year from TMBOA and believe that they are going to pass their budget, but that money is now just in the budget and they want the new board to actually make decisions about allocating those dollars. So a couple more steps to go.
As far as Forest management goes, if you'll remember, we added $200,000 to the budget to begin work on the VCA hazard tree mitigation. And I did not assume at this time, since their new board will not really review the budget until January, that we'll have any participation on that. So that if there is TMBOA participation, that would have a positive impact.
And I think there was an acknowledgement in the meeting, the budget, TMBOA budget meeting yesterday, that that million dollar number is likely low. And so I think that they've opened the door to, to supporting Forest management in a, in a bigger way.
Since you mentioned fees, does that include the daycare fees or?
Um, yeah. Do you want to kind of go through the grants and contributions? Oh, yes.
Before we leave the, before we leave the budget, is that where you're going next?
Oh, no, we're not leaving the budget. We were just going to run through the grants and contributions, but if you have general questions to the budget, let's get those taken care of.
Yeah, like just a couple of quick comments. Not, not line to line, obviously, but I would just like to say that I'm currently still not in agreement or satisfied with the budget. I focused on the combined summary, which not just only the general fund, but the combined summary, which shows the 2.1 million deficit. And I, and I acknowledge that within that 2.1 million deficit, there's about 625, which is, you know, budgeted for 26, that was also budgeted for 25 and shifted between years. And so you could argue, you know, one way or another, whether leave it in or take it out, but it still shows a deficit. So I, I believe that this is indicative of essentially a structural issue that we need to address. We have declining revenues and we need to address that fact. And I don't believe that as a council, we should be spending our savings in, in this year's budget because it's, there, there isn't anything extraordinary that I recall. So I just don't believe we should be spending our savings. And I would love to continue to work on it, but it has to be obviously with the direction of, of the entire council. But I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm still not satisfied with this budget and wouldn't, wouldn't be in favor of it.
You know, Harvey, when I looked at the deficit and decreasing the ending fund balance to 29, you know, I gave it some thought and, and what you're describing is concerning, but I think the destination is hitting a bit of a wall post pandemic in that, at least from my perspective, into the future, revenues for the town will come back as visitation increases in the years to come. And so although there is a concern of 2.1 million dollar deficit, bringing us from 31 to 29, I hope that that will come more in line in, in the next three to five years.
I had just one question related to Harvey's that, and I, I appreciate Harvey's, you know, ongoing concern about fiscal responsibility. So thank you for that. Elizabeth, I'm not sure if this is putting you on the spot. If you had to estimate.
He needs Starlight.
I'm so sorry, Scott.
Scott, you broke up.
You broke up on that.
What would you say is the average, sorry, apologies. Elizabeth, what do you, what would you say is the average amount of unexpected surplus that we show at the end of the year?
Of, of this current year, 2025?
Oh, no, going average over, average over multiple years.
You know what? I have, I would have to go back and put that data together for you, Scott. I don't have.
What's an unexpected surplus?
Are you talking about like what we, what our surplus ended, ended up being as compared to the budget? Is that what you're?
Yeah, exactly. Because it seems like every year we end up, like the budget story ends up significantly to the positive what we had forecast. At least every year I've been on council.
Yeah, and I can, I can definitely put that together with you, but the historic numbers that are included in this budget and in this, the combined summary of towns funded, supported funds, these are actual numbers and not budgeted numbers. So this is what actually happened in those years, in the prior years. But I can go back and kind of calculate for you each year to the positive. I would say, I would say in the last few years, it's probably been close to a million.
Yeah, that would be my, my guess as well.
And part of it has to do with, you know, even in this year, we're going to see some positive impact, but we're moving, you know, $625,000 over to next year. So I can definitely put some more data together for you on that, but my guess off the top of my head would be about a million.
Yeah. So Harvey, when I look at, at the, the forecasted deficit, I, I do haircut, cut it by the fact that conservative budgeting by the town keeps always mean that we end up with not, not spending as much as we thought and sometimes revenue comes in higher as well. We, we can keep our fingers crossed.
Fees?
Well, do you want to really quickly, just did anybody have any concerns or comments on the grant committee's recommendations?
Yeah, let me just, so I'm sure as we all look at the grant list, we, we all have comments and we make changes, but you know, we've kind of allocated that to the grant committee. So I'd rather, you know, if somebody wants to make a comment, that's fine, but I, I don't want to get into a debate as to, should it be 13,000 or 10,000? I mean, that's really up to the grant committee.
Yeah, and like I said, this, what, what typically the council does is provide the grant committee with how much they have to work with in doing the review at the initial meeting and then they go through and meet and assign it. So, but I do know that if you wanted to kind of take a look at the details, so we.
A brief, brief look, put it that way.
Yeah, there's no special approval for this. It's in line with the general budget, so.
We do have a hand raised.
Okay. Jonathan Greenspan, okay. Mr. Greenspan?
Hey, Pete, I do want to comment on the grants, sorry. Even though it's in the general budget for letting the, the grants committee be able to make the decisions based upon the guidance of the counselor, council and how they set up the structure for, for the grants to be heard, a lot of times that just is pushed aside and just let the grants committee deal with it. I know that for a fact because I've been on the grants committee two different times for about five or six years total. So it's been a couple of years, so I don't know if there's been a revision on it. But as reading through some of this stuff, as I had plenty of time in Denver to do some of this stuff, especially yesterday, there's one grant that catches my eye and, and I'm just, it, it's kind of like the same HOA question that I have for you guys all the time. Why are we spending duplicate money or double the money for some certain individuals to pay for the same thing twice? And in one of the grants that you have there, and I'll explain which one it is in just a few moments, you have a staff member, one in each town, one for the county, and even in some respects satellite, that does the same thing that this particular organization has. And we have them in-house. The other thing that goes along with it is the fact that even though some of these organizations are nonprofit, they don't allow outside comments or necessarily the, the monies to be allocated directly for the village. So when I, when I was on the grants committee, which, you know, again, it, a fair amount of time has slid past, so I don't know exactly how it's operated, that was a big concern. Is it being reinvested right here in our town limits? And so when we say that it's like 13,000 or 10,000 or five, whatever the number is, well, there's a lot of things I can think of, including approving the auditory sound of the room that you guys are in for the people that are on Zoom and many other things that are duplicate spending that could be singular spending. And so I, I'm not going to call the organization out by name, but I, I'm going to, you're going to figure it out. When I say you have Lauren, you have a gentleman in the town of Telluride, and you have somebody in the, in the county, that's just in our own immediate parameters. So it's hard to know exactly what that money is being spent for if you guys don't dive into it. Unfortunately have to do that or it's in the guidelines of these grants. So personally, I think Lauren is doing a fine job. So why do I have to pay for it twice? And, and with no guarantee that it's going to be pinpointed towards us. So there's my, there's my point on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else online? Okay. Any other comments on budget?
Yeah, so, well, we do want to talk about rates and what's included in this budget. The rate schedule is another item, but I know I've had a few questions. Obviously, at the last meeting, we've already approved a rate schedule for VCA, but at this meeting, we have three rate schedule approvals. One is for the community services department and it's basically cleaning up some language and an inadvertent change that was made last year. That detail is in your packet. The second is another. year. That detail is in your packet. Uh, the second is another, um, very standard change. It's the increases in our water sewer rates for customers next year, based on the rate study adopted in November of 2023. This was the recommended increase this year that council approved. And the third, um, was discussed in our budget meeting, but this is actually bringing our Munchkins rates in line with what we're seeing in the community as an average. So not the high, not the low, but in between. And I will also say that I have since received word that there are several other, um, childcare facilities that are also increasing their rates in January again. So these are based on, these recommendations were based on the current rates. But I know we had, um, I know I have at least one person that wants to talk about those a little bit. So I thought I would open the floor for that.
And that person would be me. And what I was hoping we could do, and I know that we're already at a deficit on our budget, but really, right, the childcare rates going up, uh, to the tone of 7%. And, you know, no one's getting raises to the tone of 7% is how I look at it. And so if there's a way that we can bring it down at a minimum two percentage points to 5%, um, that would be what would make me happy.
I, I do want to also say, and I, and I, and I would love for council to discuss that. It's not too late to make any changes. It'll just be offset by, um, more cuts in the general fund as the childcare facility. We, we can't cut anymore out of the childcare fund right now. Um, so I think that's a great discussion for you all to have. I'll also say that we have received some grant funding next year that we are, um, can divvy up between our lowest income parents. And additionally, we also budget, um, Munchkins tuition assistance through the town. So, um, yeah, any direction that the council has, I haven't, um, had time to work through what those numbers are yet, um, as we just recently was brought up, but, um, as far as the impact in total to the year.
But the deficit on, on childcare is 433,000?
Yes. That's the projected.
So you want to increase that deficit? Only, only because, right, it's, it's, it's the current climate that we're in, uh, you know, increasing childcare by 7%. If we could do five, I think it would be well received by our community. And yes, I would be in turn increasing it. And as Lizbeth said, I don't have the numbers. I didn't.
The total impact?
The total impact. Um, it's 2% of whatever the current rate is. I guess. Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, $400,000 that the community is contributing to, this is a pretty significant investment. Now, I guess I would question that, so the, um, the, the county was able to pass along the full impact. So there's a, there's a, the property tax associated with, for childcare. So they got the full benefit of the.
But not until that, that doesn't impact them in, in this. Well, it will impact them in the taxes in this current year, but their budget for Strong Start is based on, um, I believe their, their current collections. And then that'll, as they fund that through the year.
I guess my question is, we're the only ones that do infant care. Infant care is where a lot of the expense is. Do we get any credit? I mean, why aren't we getting a bigger proportion of those, those county dollars because of the expense that we incur?
So I think that Marty mentioned last meeting that she had had some discussions with the Strong Start board about how they have to spend those dollars. Um, I, I really hope to kind of get a better understanding as we go into next year. I know there's a lot of regulations that I don't fully understand, but a big piece of their annual budget does go to, um, childcare assistance, um, through, um, you know, their grants programs. And they've allocated the funds for this year. So we would end up running through our own program. We have our own Mountain Munchkins tuitions applications based on not having the goal to not having daycare costs, um, exceed 10% of the family, um, gross income. And so, you know, we calculate that based on, you know, what we receive in assistance from other organizations on each family. So that would take into account these increases as well. But, um, I will say that, um, there's going to be a few months next year where our vacancy is going to be a little bit higher than I had originally anticipated based on some movement, um, between classrooms at Munchkins. It's tough because, um, you know, you have to reserve spots in another classroom for somebody that's moving up and you may have some lag time in there and Chambers has gone back. And COVID really threw a wrench in, in kind of the age distribution in the program. So, um, I, I, Munchkins is going to be, um, a little up and down next year.
Paul, would we be able to approve it on first reading and then get the data for second reading?
Yeah.
Well, I would need to, I would need to incorporate that into the second reading.
All right. But we can have a discussion and move things forward.
Yeah.
Just so that we know the, the actual financial impact, you know, I don't want Harvey to have any more heartburn.
Uh, and, and frankly, um, I can probably calculate that when, when this is over and give you a better idea before we.
Pete, you, you might not see when we have our hands up on Zoom, but Marty's got her hand up for a while.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. Usually I just barge in. So, but thank, thank you, Harvey. Um, there were some good conversations there. I, um, yeah, there's a lot, I mean, a lot of it has to do with the actual mill levy that was passed and what those funds were earmarked for when the mill levy was passed and some of those things, um, yeah, just straight up, don't, don't help us out all that much. It doesn't mean, I don't think that, you know, I couldn't, or we couldn't, you know, reignite some conversations and understand better where there might be areas where we could benefit. Um, Rick, I, I, I was, you know, I, I was remembering when I had two kids in Munchkins and looking at those increases would have freaked me out also. I'm a little more, um, on the, I'm a little more concerned though about trying to, to help those who, who it truly would be challenging for and, and not necessarily those who would, you know, just have to, you know, come up with a little bit more out of their monthly budget. And where I'm going, it, you know, Elizabeth already mentioned, you know, I'd really like to focus mostly on our scholarship students and, you know, maybe if there's ways that we can bolster those kids because knowing that our rates are already less than any other provider in the region, you know, and understanding that we've been providing this, you know, essentially this, you know, supplement to folks' daycare for decades, you know, at a certain point, you know, we all have to share, share the burden. And I, and I am aware that there are some students, some families in Munchkins that probably can better shoulder that than others. And while not wanting to get too in the weeds, we already have, we already have a means by which the ones that need the help the most can get the help that they need. So, you know, that, that does help with my, you know, contemplation of increasing rates.
So can I make a suggestion possibly, Rick, that might work is that I focus more on, um, because we will be getting back income, we get income back, data back every year to see which programs people apply for. Would it be, um, acceptable to just come back to you with potentially an increase in our, um, scholarship program if necessary to ensure that it's, people are still not paying in excess of 10% of their gross income?
Yes.
Okay.
Any help?
But will it make you happy?
Scott?
Well, that ensures that we continue with the same structure to our, um, uh, support of the program. And like Marty said, um, those that can shoulder that, um, you know, our support is going to our, uh, families that really need it.
Yeah. I mean, it's just in some instances for the five days a week, it was going up by a hundred dollars a month, you know, and a hundred dollars a month is still a lot of money. That's a utility bill. And, you know, I don't care who you are, the hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. So anything that we could do to mitigate that, um, would be phenomenal.
Okay. I agree with all of that.
Since we're on the topic, since we're on the topic of Munchkins, I did want to make an observation that we don't need to address this year, but when we do the budget next year, I would really like to understand it better. When I divide, you know, we, the budget breaks out the revenues and the expenses for each of the three types of children we serve, infant, toddler, and preschool. And we have always kind of operated on the assumption that infant is extremely expensive because of the state requirements for staffing ratios. But I was surprised to find that the cost per child of the toddler program was actually higher than the infant program. And it really surprised me and, and it doesn't seem like it should be that way. So when we do the budget next year, I'd really like us to dig into that if it continues to be the case and understand why.
Sure. And I think you may want to have, we, next year we'll be having a work session as we look to, um, changes we may need to make to the program next school year to keep it, um, sustainable. And we can definitely go into more detail about how those numbers are come, how we come to those numbers.
Where are we on our 501(c)3?
Um, so the town is not opening a 501(c)(3), but we are, um, there are a group of individuals moving down the process to do that. So, yes.
Cause I think that will be important for the long term.
Well, I think that, that what, what, what our hope is, is that that will provide a stable scholarship fund to where we can make our rates, uh, a more sustainable rate as a, you know, moving forward and have parents still be able to afford.
I don't want to linger this too much longer, but I do want to echo things that both Rick and Marty said, and just, um, the fundraising event that's happening at the end of this year. Is that the first time we've done that event?
So we are not doing that event. We've been selected as a beneficiary by an organization that is doing that event. So, um, that is not a town sponsored event. That is correct.
But have we been the beneficiary of that event?
So, no, there's not been an event like that, to my understanding. We used to do a, um, like a seasonal kind of parent night out event with a silent auction and bounce houses and a movie and such, but it became, it's became such a cost of labor on the team to put it on and to get all of the donations from the businesses. Then in the end, the, um, it just wasn't generating the amount that kind of supported putting it on.
Since we haven't done it this way, we may not know what that impact will be. And this may be something to bolster up our scholarship fund.
Absolutely. And that's what we're going to push for because the, the one thing that we've been asked for is, you know, what are the opportunities for giving for Munchkins? So we have a lot of different things you could sponsor, maybe swim lessons or the scholarship fund. So that, you know, we're very, we're hopeful, but it's not an event that we're putting on. So we don't want to necessarily bank on that yet.
We can promote it and then if we can just make sure that Chambers, um, has support. She's very busy running the business. And sometimes when you're running the business, you don't have the time to go out and look for some of these smaller grant and funding type opportunities. So there could be some statewide support that could also help to bolster things.
Yes. Yeah. And like I said, this will be that first event. And, and as beneficiaries, we're not really putting it on. So, um, but we're hoping that people will volunteer to assist.
And attend.
Yes, definitely.
Do we have, do we do more public comment? Do we discuss?
The hearing is at the December, correct? But we can do public comment.
If there's any public comment, we can take that.
Any public comment on the budget? Anything on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay.
I want to make one comment just regarding our, um, proposal on the mill levy reduction. Um, I'm a little disappointed that we haven't received any public comment from our constituents about that. And so I do think if that's something people are actually in favor of, that they should let us know that before we get to the next meeting.
So if you don't get any public comment, you're going to raise their property taxes?
That makes things easier.
I might leave their property taxes as is.
Okay. The challenge. All right. So we're not voting on the budget this time.
You do need to make a motion on the first reading.
Oh, the first reading. Okay. All right, you need a motion. On first reading, uh, for the 26 budget, does item B incorporate into that as well?
There's two separate motions.
Yeah.
Got it. And so I make a motion on the 26 budget first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We also make a motion.
Wait a minute, you forgot to say anyone opposed.
Oh, anyone opposed?
Aye.
So noted.
You mean, you mean nae. Nae, you're correct.
Okay.
Makes you sound like a horse.
And then the property, uh, motion on the property taxes, and a motion in ordinance of the town levying property taxes for the year 25 to be collected in 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So now we got a vote on the fee schedules?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion and resolution adopt in the 2026 fee schedules?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right. Four o'clock. So we're a little behind. Colorado Flight Alliance? Mr. Skinner? Thank you, Lizbeth.
Thank you.
Um, you can use this one.
Hey, how are you?
How's, how are things going?
It's going all right, you know? Just another year of the roller coaster.
Okay. There you go.
Definitely a big glasses for this one. All right. Good to see you all. Thanks for having me. All right. I'm just going to forewarn you, and I know that I have 15 minutes. Um, this thing got kind of beefy. Some of it was teed up for top line and intergovernmental, and then some of it's come along in the last couple of weeks. And so there's quite a bit of ground to cover. I'm going to try to take it in blocks and dig in where I need to, and then please stop me where we need to. Um, so in like the national, in two seconds or less, the shutdown didn't really affect us. We were pretty fortunate. It was good. Denver wasn't so bad. Montrose was great. Uh, the ups and downs of the economy this year have been well known and unprecedented. Um, definitely been a tale of two cities on indicators. There's even an anti-luxury, uh, travel segment that they've cut out now at this point. And what was interesting about that one is that it's all based on authenticity, which is used to be where we hung our hat, uh, and still hang it, uh, to some degree, even combined with that luxury travel experience. While luxury is still extraordinarily popular, uh, and it does tend to split by demographic, but it has really been that roller coaster all summer and all years. We've been up and down with bookings. Um, summer finished flat to just down maybe two points. So we're still kind of working on the final, final numbers. Uh, we've had solid growth since, uh, prior to COVID and COVID, kind of stair stepping up each year. We took flat as a win this year, uh, considering comps in the industry and quite a few folks of our size who were down. Uh, so just coming to finish there. And then I'm going to end up coming back to both summer and winter, just in some of the other conversation. Uh, winter has been running down consistently since Labor Day. We did not really have a surge coming out of Labor Day, and we've been running off five, five to 7% ever since. And that point I'm going to dig into a little bit more specifically in a minute, uh, and come back around to. I did have some top line summary slides. I don't know if you guys need them. Uh, that was, this was the part that was teed up for intergovernmental. You know, we're an economic sustainability and viability, uh, organization. We, we work on levers, air service market. We work on levers, air service marketing, guest services in the region, work with multiple public and private, excuse me, partners. Prioritize our spending for return and make sure that we're responsive to everybody involved.
Question?
Yep.
Are we a remote destination?
Yeah, I would, I would say, it depends on who's talking and what they're talking about. But a lot of times a remote destination will be defined as one that doesn't have a major metro within, I don't know, striking distance. We'll call it hour to two hours driving Park City, Denver to Summit County. Jackson ourselves, Sun Valley, we could all be classified as remote. But it's a little overstated to the word, would be my thought.
I guess when I look at the map and I see Newark to Montrose, Atlanta to Montrose, LA to Montrose. You know, every major city has some level of service within an hour and 15 minutes. Which, you know, you can almost compare us to Salt Lake in some aspects.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the prides, I think, of the network we've put together, is that we've been able to tap into those major ski markets, those major mountain visitation markets, and have worked to lay those over with our core hubs that we know we have daily service out of and build those along with those destination markets. And from studies going 10 years back now, we know that, and with every other mountain destination as well, we know that those direct flights stimulate those markets, that you gain share as you put those in there.
And then when I looked at, at your airport passenger trends, you know, we're, we're right in there with Aspen.
We are. I have, you're, you're leading me to the water.
Well.
We, and actually we are, and we're actually pretty proud of that.
You should be, is my point. I mean, I.
And we have some concerns right now. There's some flags that have come up over the last month and a half. So my, my report today isn't all positive, but we are super excited about, are super proud of the fact that we've been able to build and, and drive those trends, and these are the annual seats, you know, Aspen and ourselves, that we've caught Junction, Durango, Eagle, and Hayden, although Eagle went off the charts this coming winter. They got big jets like we did into Montrose, and it helped them. You know, and that if you look at those ski resorts too, they're all doing somewhere between 1.2 and 2 million skier visits. And we're trucking along at 500,000, which is more along the lines of Sun Valley and, and Gunnison, where we have double, if not more, than their air service. So in the ratio of those comp sets on an annual basis, you know, we're certainly holding our own. I can actually just skip all the rest of it and keep going from there and come back to it. Let me, let me just pause for a second. We run about a five, five and a half million dollar budget. We expect it to be five and a half this year. It's about five this, forecast for the coming year. Seventy-five percent of that is operational guarantees, 15% to marketing, 10% admin. We're proud to keep that piece very low as well. Certainly, we're, we've got an eye on, on the conversation you just had and other fluctuations in the market, and of course, the overall national trends. With that, you know, we very diligently try to apply where the rubber hits the road. We're updating our regional economic study right now. With that forecast about 60% of the tourism economic impact in this valley is supported by air, and about 62% of the jobs. And so that equates to, as our economy is about 80% tourism, as we forecast, it's about half of all the jobs and the economic activity in this valley is supported by air service. The guys doing the study because of the growth over the last five years think that that number is actually higher now, but they're trying to dig in and figure out how to, to account for it. With that, it's about 787 million in total annual economic activity for San Miguel County, and 464 of that is coming in on planes. With that, we track ourselves directly against, and I'll go fast through here. This is Telluride and Mountain Village together, it's seats and sales taxes, lodging taxes, retail and restaurant. And all the trends match with air and those, those main indicators. And of course, the important one in this conversation, Mountain Village's taxes overall also follow that trend. And if you look back over the 10 years, the percentages are, percentages are actually eerily similar. Oops, excuse me. So with that, and getting back to the more fun stuff, the, you know, the trends we've been very proud of over the last couple of years, or over the last five year, 10 years, five years, and then over the last few years. We have started to see though, and we had about a year and a half, some indicators coming at us from the airlines, you know. We don't knee jerk react, you know, we fight. We've been battling in and out of different capacities since COVID, like everybody has with the big spikes. And, and really coming into this winter, had a couple of things come up that started to raise the red flags. This just shows the 10-year and the five-year, where we've putting ourselves up against our comp set. And we, as a destination, are healthy, we're seeing some declining revenues. But obviously, we need to look at what our competitors are doing and how our trends are going for the long term. So 10 years, good. Five years, good in the dark green. If we scoot that, or put that into this, into the graph that we were already looking at, and you, you hit it, Peter, right? Where I was like, we, we like our trend, we like the nice measured growth year to year. It's very even. We've been charging ahead. No big jumps here or there on the annual basis. If we drill down and zoom into post-COVID, you know, we're good on the three-year, on the overall, on the annual. The year-over-year, we're starting to lose a little traction. Like, we're starting to see our comp set pull ahead of us. We're kind of in the lower end of that group right now. If we then break that down into the seasons, and this is where we're trying to granulate, where the flags were coming up and trying to dig in and figure out where the boat, you know, might be having some trouble. Summer's had nice even growth over the last five years. Been stair stepping up similar to that trend that we saw on the annual basis. When we break into the, the winter though, is where we see where the variations have been and where some of the, the concerns are. Where we jumped pretty heavily straight out of COVID, came up again, but then have been slowly leaking for the last three seasons. You can see our other competitors at this point across the board. Steamboat and ourselves are a little bit similar because some of this has been with Southwest, right? Where we've been up and down, trying to gauge capacity, but we've also grown to mainline jets on United. And, and actually back and forth, like, grown on mainline jets with Dallas and also fought it with, with American a little bit. And that's one of the pieces that's come up. Junction, Durango, et cetera, all moving ahead. This is where, when we looked at the capacity that the real flag started to hit about three, four weeks ago, I ended up in a situation with two of our major carriers where they were looking to remove mainline jets off of two of our core routes this winter. And some of it over the holidays and some of it in March. And following up on what we'd heard the year before, I was flat told that we were not necessarily keeping up with our comp set. And that is new for us. And so we, you know, started digging in and looking at where and how we were performing. And so in checking back then to the passengers we were just looking at and now at the winter seats, you know, Steamboat again up and down with us right here in this, in the middle zone. And ourselves, you know, basically on a little bit of a downward, on a downward trend the last three seasons and gaining a few percentage points back this year. The others again on a more even stair step up. And the nutshell of it, if you look up into the right-hand graph, I know it's hard to see, is the three years where the flag went off. Is that since COVID, we are not retaining that spike in capacity as well as our competitors. And, and while we may be okay as a destination, it's concerning for, as far as that long-term piece goes. This is, sorry, this is the same thing over actually. Just visualize, the orange is basically that competitive three-year piece. So we took it and we started throwing it against the local metrics, including destination skier visits. Prior to COVID, destination skier visits and air capacity ran almost even year-to-year overtime, growing even overtime. When our capacity and demand spiked out of COVID, we wouldn't expect the skier visits to necessarily immediately come up and meet that much of a jump right away. But we would expect it to continue to grow towards that capacity. And unfortunately, what's been happening is that we've been leaking destination skier visits each year despite the capacity. You can see it right here where we're up, we're actually even up on passengers, but the skier, destination skier visits are coming down. And they continue to come down at a steeper rate than the passengers. And you can see here where we've been fighting to keep the capacity on those different routes. And it's still well above where it had been in supplying, or providing supply for that visitation group. In the course of the conversations, we, everybody started throwing out different factors and to, to be square and fair. Like, little spikes, that's where Epic started. Jensen departed in 19, 19, I think it was 19. With him went the last bastion of all ski resort marketing. That was also the last time we were ranked number one in Condonast, and we were number two in Forbes at that time. We took a whole year off as well with the Tourism Board and Colorado Flights off marketing for a year. And so there was a whole dead spot right there. Coming back though, we've been fully re-engaged in that. We've had a few delayed openings. But we're trying to find factors as to where and how we are losing traction out in the marketplace. And this is where we dug in a little bit deeper to see within winter where the holes are. And what we see is, you know, we were up early last year, you know, with, you can see the two and the three-week patterns here over the holidays. Over the three-week pattern this week does well, over the two-week pattern which we're into this year, again, it does not do well. You need group and regional in that period. This was the real telltale though, was January, and kind of heartbreaking for us because we've been spending so much time and tons of capital, because it's very expensive when you're running lighter loads, to build service into January and early February. And so with that then, you can see that that is where the major piece of the leakage has been going on. And that time period is group, it's international, it's guy-girl trips, generally that type of thing. And so with that then, it leads us back into, you know, what we have been working with a ski resort on, where most of those resources along with sales and marketing have been eliminated. The group product was gone, international was gone, and ourselves and the Tourism Board trying to carry the load. And with that, you know, we're outgunned out there in the marketplace. And I think that there has been, I mean, we, we got anecdotal feedback from group and from the major groups that, that it, it wasn't an air problem, that we were outpriced in the destination and that they were going elsewhere. And the international piece is one of those things that if you take your foot off the gas of something that's just growing like that, it, it really has some detriment. There's of course some international and national factors to that as well. But really, it, it drilled down to some of the places where we see that we are just heavily outweighed in the industry. We took a hot look at capital improvements, and this is the other thing, as all is within perspective coming out of COVID. We came out lightly. We came out in a different situation, in a different setup, where everyone else has the gas down. There's almost like a renaissance of western ski resorts going on with the capital improvements that are happening and the marketing that's going on. Last year Aspen was coming into the season, they were 10% off, which normally wouldn't cause a panic. Their resort created an entire program among their own lodging group, et cetera, and went out to market with a short-term blast to hit it. Like, we're getting in-state stuff right now with folks marketing regional for this time of year for their resorts. And at, at this stage, it is very, it's tough out there when Steamboat puts $250 million into their base area, when Winter Park is putting $2 billion into a master plan, including a heavy gondola. You got a $50 million gondola in Big Sky, another $50 million gondola in Park City.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah, blah, blah, blah. Like, and so tons going on. The other piece of that was the, just to tie around to the thought of Condonast, Forbes, we're off of those top 10 lists now, where we had been, as recent as six years ago, number one and number two. Now, those are survey-based and, you know, not science, but it's indicative. And, and again, you getting, I had a younger skier come up to us and tell us that basically Telluride's not the cool place to ski anymore. And that little thing too fed into where our brand position is in these markets. Now, I won't belabor this. This is just the DMOs and the destinations. We're kind of average, average to low, but all of these destinations have ski resort resources layered over the top. And so we are not only just behind on the averages, we're double down and fighting for market share.
What's DMO?
Sorry?
What is DMO?
Sorry, tourism offices and economic development organizations, destination marketing organizations. So like our tourism office, and then I put our marketing money in there to shore ours up a little bit. And this is the worry, is that where we had had so much momentum in the New Yorks and the LAs and the Atlantas, is that we are getting outgunned and losing market share in those destinations at this point. That we are on a retracted trend and something that, that needs reversing for our long-term health. Ultimately, all the way back, that's, we're, we're trending five to seven percent down for this winter. We have not seen that really blip or change since Labor Day. And we are certainly looking for some snow help and some, some global destination reinvigoration, reinvention of our brand, of our infrastructure, et cetera, to help move the ball forward.
So what's the, what's the solution?
Solution is collaboration amongst ourselves and with our resort partners to, to put the shine back on Telluride in a very general term.
Matt, I, I have a question. When, when the larger airlines and carriers come forward with comments, like you said earlier, that they want to perhaps leave, what are the?
They didn't say they were going to leave.
Or, or, or decrease.
Yeah.
Or decrease. What are other organizations in our destinations that are at the table advocating on our behalf outside of CFA? Right, there isn't a local lodging association, for example, so really the lodgers are being represented by CFA, right?
You know, we've, we've had a long and colorful history of those organizations, and luckily, it's a small community. So even though the Lodging Association is not truly formalized right now, we still talk to the leaders of what that group was. And we're actually really pleased to see, and you guys have been part of this, is that the merchant associations are all of a sudden the, the leading piece of the puzzle here, and the lodgers are coming to those. So we're very excited to see that. So Mountain Village Lodging Association and the new Telluride, newish, Telluride version and the combined, I think there's a meeting next month, is, is how we're talking to those. But we work with the Tourism Office very directly as well, as you know. And they also have very direct relationships with all the business owners, et cetera. You know, and it's, it's across the board, you know, it's, it's from large to small hotel to Main Street to real estate to it all. We, we do interact with, with the broad group, and so we're pretty confident.
But really, my point being is in a large scale, it's really CFA out there.
We're on the point. Yes, that is correct.
Running point on it.
Yeah.
There's really no other organization that would run point, you know, should CFA not exist. That's my point.
And, and just a quick follow-up to maybe that, that train of thought. When, when an airline comes and starts talking about saying, well, maybe we want a smaller jet or, you know, basically fewer seats. Are they saying that they're reallocating their fleet to go somewhere else? Or are they saying in, in general, they're reducing everywhere? I mean, is it, I'm just trying to understand if it's a shift that the airline is talking about, or is it something else?
I, I think that is it. It's basically a lack of confidence that we're going to be able to fill those seats and fill those seats at a good rate, and they're going to take that bigger plane and put it into a different market. Just to tie that off, we managed to keep everything they came after. So we did, Rick, you put, we, on point, went straight to it and basically laid out the plan, the history, gave them some data, built on lodging, built on et cetera, like, we need these planes. And we're able to keep, I mean, it was Houston in the spring, it was Dallas, you know, it was United over the holidays. And, and we managed to keep all of those pieces of the puzzle in place. But we need to fill them, and we need to reverse the mo, like, the, the trend that we see up there and start moving the visitation closer to the air capacity as it had once been.
So I think you said something that's very cognizant, which is the authenticity to luxury and a little bit of brand confusion that we've fallen into is a destination in the last few years. And some of the response that happened COVID-related that some people disagreed with at the time, and now we're starting to see some of that fruit come to bear as little rotten fruit. Where I do think we have opportunity, we have opportunity, and I think we'll be kind of continuing some of these conversations later in the day when we talk about retail, is about how we can really strengthen our partnership with you, with TTV, with our team, who's very focused on business and development and moving the destination forward, and how we can support our merchants. And when I think about it, I think of it in like a very small way. If I'm a small business in Telluride and I'm doing internet marketing in a destination where people don't come here to, because they don't have an easy flight, I'm wasting marketing dollars. And so what type of support can our more sophisticated organizations provide in these forums and things like Molly does and education? And how we can really help to bolster a lot of our businesses to, you know, we know that people need multiple touches. They need multiple pushes. And so the ways that we can work together to show up in front of people in the places where they can get to us, and they will get to us, and some of their friends get to us. And, and I think it's about taking a community approach and a small business accelerator type of approach.
Absolutely, I, I, you know, if you get tired of the taglines in my emails, it's basically like, everybody, please get the word out. Everybody participate. Everybody get to the table. Because when we need that voice, we're a small destination fighting bigger dogs. And two, TTV and ourselves need the data. Like, we need all that back-of-house stuff that we collect from all the partners currently and that we, and actually, we try to pay for and provide back as well. So all those pieces of the puzzle help us very much when we're going out and making our case for added service, added development, all those pieces that come along with it.
And, and thanks, thanks for that, Eileen, but I, I really think that this is an incredible deck of slides, Matt. So I really appreciate the added context that you've included this time around because this is very different than what we've seen in the past. And I think if anyone who's looking at this right now isn't very afraid. And I think if anyone who's looking at this right now isn't very afraid, there is something wrong. And I think that what was most eye-opening to me was the slide that showed all the investment that other ski resorts are making. And let's be clear, these are ski resorts, some of which are not behemoth resorts. They are considered remote. They have skier visits that are equal or lower than ours. And while we can continue to carry the load of marketing and supporting our businesses, we have to have support from our ski area operator. And I think the Telluride, Mountain Village, the county, our businesses, TTV, and the Air Org have been carrying that weight. And we cannot continue to do it alone. And if that flow chart with the dates of, you know, when things happened, when Bill Jensen left, if that didn't wake you up, Telsky, to the concern that your participation is critical for this, for this resort to exist. And, Eileen, I, I 100% agree, you know, the town will continue to do everything in its power, but there reaches a point when if there's not investment into the ski resort by the owner of the ski resort, our hands are tied. And I'm getting very tired of receiving emails that say, oh, we're a remote resort, so we can't spend any money, when there's clear examples of that happening across the entire ski industry. And, and thank you, Matt, for bringing these to our attention, because we don't have any more time to sit on our hands and wait for things to change.
And to Harvey's point, on the budget, if things are going to keep going down, we're going to keep being in tighter and tighter budget spots.
How much did you get hit financially for the Merchant Pass debacle?
Actually, the financial implications are fairly minimal. There, it's just the independent contributions and probably about 3% of our budget. Obviously, it's a benefit that came out of our organization, we're exploring other benefits we can provide. We've actually, and I think Ski Resort's off and running, we offered to help them with facilitation, just since we've been doing it for 20 years. But I think they got it up and going, and they're off and running, and so that's, seems to be moving ahead as it is.
And Montrose does contribute to...
They do, they, out of their general fund, they're about, I think it was 5% to 6% in the graph. Sorry, I tried to speed through that part.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, it's definitely, I think Marty used the term wake-up call. It's the canary in the coal mine. So thank you for putting us on notice.
No, thank you all, thanks for the time, and as always, you can always reach out to me directly. Rick, of course, sits on our board, and happy to communicate and answer any further questions.
Sorry, this is Scott, I had one question.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so my ques, sorry, I turned off my video, so my audio would work better. But my question is, Telsky has dropped their group sales. Is there something that we should be thinking about as a government or as, as a group of entities to stand up a group sales effort? Do you think that's something that is worth looking at? Or is this something that if it can't be done by Telsky, it really can't be done?
You know, there's a couple parts to that, and it applies to international as well. First off, group has, TMVOA tried group a number of years ago, and it did not actually, both for corporate and leisure, and did not work out well. And not to oversimplify it, but at the end of the day, it's the resort's product, right? And that's, and this is where they hit, I believe the group product was entirely eliminated for a bit. It was pushed into Epic, as was told to me, I believe it may be coming back, I'm not so sure. But we know that we got the anecdotal information from the groups themselves or the feedback from the groups themselves. So the resort has to be at the table for those to be successful, both for international and for group, because they have the lift ticket product, and then, you know, the lodgers are more than happy to combine. There used to even be an independent lodging package product, which has gone, much less a group package product that you could put together out there. And so I think that there's a willing group of business owners and people in town who are happy to start pushing that group number back up and make sure it's the right type of group for the destination. But it, I, you know, having sat in that job at the ski resort, as you guys know, you know, it is their product. It is the ski resort's product and needs to be a part of the conversation. Good question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Thank you guys so much, good to see you as always. Before I break this, should I just close?
Pete, we do have Jonathan Greenspan's hand up if you want to take public comment. We don't normally on...
Quickly. We're running, we're way behind, but let's do it quickly.
Jonathan, we're kind of running behind, can you do it quickly?
Was it Greenspan? I can just call him. I haven't talked to him in a while.
I man, I heard that.
Yeah, how are you, Jonathan?
Hey, I, I will be quick, Pete. Yeah, I'm just echoing a lot of the stuff that's already been said. We're keeping a different ski area that is definitely a world-class class destination. We are seeing the backlash that the so-called rural or deeper destinations are not receiving anymore. And to Matt's comment, a lot of the comments that are around some of the other large-scale resorts is Telluride, been there, done that, and it's a mission to do that. Now, as Marty had said a few moments ago, that you've got to have a willing partner to do this. Yes, it is a partnership, but not a one-way street. We, as a community, cannot, cannot take care of the infrastructure needs of the largest employer there. They have to do it on their own. And at the same time, we can shine and buff up everything that we're in charge of, but that's about as far as we can go. We can't build their resort for them unless, of course, he wants to sell it to us, and we'd be happy to take it. But that's just a different conversation itself. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, you guys, good to see you.
Okay. Is David online?
David is online.
All right.
We'll continue the economic discussion. In any interest of time, I know David has a hard stop at 5 o'clock. We scheduled 30 minutes for this item, so we'll jump right in. But briefly, just as a reminder, we did go through an RFP for this Village Center commercial space analysis about a year ago. David came to the destination, spent a good bit of time here, the better part of a week, getting a lay of the land, talking to stakeholders, and then subsequently worked with Economic Planning Services to help with the data analysis. I realize I failed to mention in the memo that we've had a brief presentation to the Business Development Advisory Group, both in draft form and in final form. The final report is included in the packet, I know there's a lot of information there, so David will just hit a high-level overview of that report, as well as some of his recommendations. And then lastly, ultimately, as staff, you know, we're looking for council's desire to move forward with any of these items or, you know, potentially more importantly, any items that they don't want to move forward with. However, we recognize we may need some more time to do that. So if you're prepared to give us that direction today, that's great, and if not, then we are happy to schedule some additional time. So without further ado, I will hand it over to Mr. Greensfeller.
Thank you very much, and confirming that you can all hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Yes. All right, and confirming that you are seeing a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I think the, the first thing I've obviously got to say is I don't think I could have asked for better walk-on music for this presentation than what Mount just did, because there's a real intersection between what Mount was talking about and, and what, what I'm going to. I'm going to try to get through some slides very quickly to leave plenty of time for, for questions and answers. But just as, as JD said, you know, our project, I think probably arose out of some recommendations to the amendment to the 2022 comp plan, or to the 2022 amendment to the comp plan, you know, about how do we promote vibrancy and, and how do we, you know, balance the need for fiscal and economic health with preservation of community character? So what, what we have done is, we were onsite for a good amount of time, did numerous stakeholder interviews with a wide variety of stakeholders, a lot of data analysis with EPS, ongoing coordination with staff, and, and you have a copy of the ensuing report. So I want to start by doing a summary of some stakeholder analysis, and, you know, I'm not going to be reading these slides, I'm just going to highlight a few points off of each one. You know, with respect to Telsky, stakeholders really noted a lack of strategic or long-term capital investment and expressed their consternation about both that and deferred maintenance. With respect to TMVOA, residents appear to be confused about, for example, whether they can vote in local elections, because their properties might be owned in an LLC or a trust, and expressed a desire to have greater transparency. Stakeholders also noticed an imbalanced tenant mix, including significant overconcentrations in some areas like sporting goods and underrepresentations and others such as fashion. Better utilizing common areas to create a better visitor experience was noted. And finally, some spaces not being actively marketed for lease was noted, and that was something that I corroborated when I was doing my market research. So while Mountain Village retail space is expensive, it's important to note that it's less expensive than retail space in Telluride. And in addition to that, retail space is leased on a triple-net basis, which means the tenant reimburses for common area maintenance, taxes, and insurance. And the triple-net reimbursements are less in Mountain Village than they are in Telluride. So the base rent is lower in Mountain Village, and the triple-net reimbursements are lower in Mountain Village, because a lot of that common area maintenance is supplied from the, you know, from the town. Retailers really need to be able to control labor costs in order to survive, and the high cost of living, including housing, means that even entry-level retail employees make high wages. It's a real concern from a retailer perspective. There's a tension between authenticity, having authenticity and creating a high-end exclusive image that, that we heard about from stakeholders and have noted really needs to be worked through. Increasing the diversity of programming with particular attention to family-oriented programming was also a common concern that we heard. So in sum, there's, you know, a need for an overall brand statement and vision statement. And we think that that will be really an important piece of, or an important first step in a retail strategy. So what are the necessary elements for vibrant retail districts? Vibrant retail districts really live where, where vision, regulation, so that's public sector regulation, and market realities intersect. And, and I think just to get on the same page, when we talk about retail, you know, we often talk about building typologies, like it's a mall or it's a strip center. And I think it's really more important to talk about retail in terms of retail behaviors. And so on, on the one hand, you've got commodity retail, and, you know, those are things like the cell phones that we buy, anything where it's essentially the same thing no matter where you buy it. You can buy a cellphone from Best Buy, from the machine in the airport if you lost your phone, from your cellphone company, from Amazon, from Apple, exactly the same thing. So price and convenience are really the things that inform your purchasing decision, whereas specialty is all about how you want to, how you want to spend your discretionary time and your discretionary income. So how you're allocating those particularly important scarce resources. And, and, you know, Mountain Village and the Village Center is really much better set up and much more appropriate for specialty retail than commodity retail. And, and some of that is borne out in the data, which we provided extensively, but are not going over here for lack of time, but just by way of example, you can look at the amount of sales tax that's generated by online sales, and, and you can see that. So with all that said about trying to create a common language with which to talk about retail, I want to get a little bit, a little bit wonky on you here and talk about sticky priors. So, you know, sticky prior is a bias in favor of an initial or established judgment. And this is particularly important when it comes to marketing, but it also applies to places. So there's a question that, that, that we're raising about whether there are sticky judgments about the Village Center that need to be addressed. Is it a place that, that people have decided has, you know, limited utility for them as visitors or as residents? And, and our recommendations, you know, do begin to address that. I also want to talk about the economic concept of experienced goods. And experienced goods are things that are not valued until they're experienced, much as the street in these pictures would be experienced much differently before and after the streets makeover. So focusing on ways to create the Village Center as an experienced good is going to help drive traffic and create differentiation, as well as overcome any sticky settlements that, that may exist. And, and so these are places that I think we're tying in with some of what Matt said. And of course, you know, some, some things are within our control, some things are not within our control. We're going to focus on, on those that, where recommendations might be able to actually have an impact on, on today's situation. So in terms of thriving retail districts, the, the most important takeaways that I'd like to leave you with is the, there really needs to be a champion that's invested over the long term. And, you know, with all due respect to the electeds in, in the room, this is a project that will go on longer than an election cycle. So the champion needs to be able to keep an eye on the ball over that long term, as, you know, these plans can take years to implement. So keeping a focus on the brand vision that is developed and managing for change are some of the really important roles that, that a champion has. I'd like to talk for just a couple of minutes about retailer challenges. And this is where the brand and the vision tie into marketing and tenant attraction and tenant curation. And so the idea of telling the stories to help potential retailers understand what Mountain Village and the Village Center environment, you know, can support them, because it's attracting the type of consumer behaviors that's associated with successful specialty retail. And, and this is where, you know, explaining the difference between commodity and specialty retail really comes into play, because we shop for commodities much differently than we shop for specialty goods and services, much different behaviors associated with buying a commodity like a phone than going out to do a little bit of window shopping, maybe buy, you know, maybe buy something and have a nice white tablecloth dinner. So continuing with some retailer challenges, retailers have all retail destinations from which they can choose when they're going to open a store. So we have to be realistic about how and where Mountain Village competes with other communities from which retailers can choose. And retailers open a limited number of stores, so they're evaluating all of their options in terms of where are we getting the greatest return on our store opening investment? And so where are we going to allocate that budget so that we can show our investors or Wall Street that we're actually getting the greatest return for investment made? A luxury retail base is something that I heard a lot about, and it might seem like a desirable goal, but I want to point out that it doesn't necessarily offer wealthy visitors something that they don't already have available to them at home. You know, whether it's Post Oak in Houston or Rodeo Drive in Beverly Hills. You know, whether it's Post Oak in Houston or Rodeo Drive in Beverly Hills. So if you, if you focus on just a really upscale retail mix, you're not really creating differentiated experience for visitors who are coming from, you know, from afar to experience Mountain Village. And this is where that tension between authenticity and tenant mix comes in. So it may be better to offer something that's different from what's available at a visitor's home and focus more on what makes Mountain Village a more interesting place to visit. So how does this all work? How does this happen? You know, the first thing I'm going to say is, and deliberately coming back to this theme of a vision statement, is that, you know, like a college essay needs a thesis sentence, a retail vibrance and sustainability plan needs a vision statement. I'm, I took a stab at one just as an example, not as a recommendation, but, you know, the brand statement is, the brand statement is something that explains why Mountain Village is different than every other place. And the vision is something that's forward-looking and aspirational. So they really work together. So when you begin to talk about Mountain Village aspiring to distinguish itself from other Rocky Mountain resort destinations, you know, and so on and so forth, that's really what we're, what we're trying to accomplish.
David, how does this statement distinguish itself from any other ski resort?
You know, it's, you know, I think that one of the things that it distinguishes itself as, you know, a place to, to live and work and play. And, you know, many ski resorts have, I think, less focus on the residential base and the year-round residential base. And that's something that has become more of a factor since COVID and since people have come to find, you know, since people have come and, you know, found Mountain Village and Telluride. But your point is well taken. I, the, the point I was trying to make with this is that it's forward-looking and aspirational. I think you've got to go through a process of figuring out what makes Mountain Village uniquely different from every other place. And I did not get that far with this. I was trying to give the beginning of something as an illustration. So what we've done is arranged strategies into three functional areas. And, you know, this is, we have several pages here of recommendations. When we gave the presentation to BDAP, one of the pieces of feedback that we got was, well, wait a minute, this is, there's so much there, it's more than we can bite off. It's not all intended to be tomorrow's work. And, and to that end, what we've done with these recommendations is made a suggestion about who the lead might be. The town is the lead on many. What the cost is, low, medium, high cost, what the timeline would be. And then, I think most importantly, how much effort's involved and how much impact is the recommendation likely to, likely to have? So moving, moving forward, some of our recommendations are designed to try to vest some control with the town that, that the town presently doesn't have. And, you know, with respect specifically to control over some of the retail commercial areas in the Village Center. One, one way of doing that is having access to capital. And an urban renewal authority is an opportunity to capture tax increment and then invest that back into the community. Talking about an urban renewal authority is particularly timely because of the upcoming Four Seasons and Sixth Sense's projects. Because they're about to create a huge amount of increment. So if a URA was created after they're built, then there isn't the increment that those projects represent. So, you know, we have, you know, made the point that if this is something that the town wants to do, that there is, there's certainly some amount of urgency in, in talking about that and getting it going so the increment can be captured. Some of the things the URA can do are invest in revitalization, such as physical improvements to the Village Center, or in strategies to spur economic development, which could include things like retail attraction. We also-
David, in your assessment, how much money is needed to be invested in the Village Center?
That was, that was beyond, that was beyond the scope of-
Yeah, but you've done this for a lot of people. I mean, if you had to pull a number out of the air, is it a $10 million thing, $100 million?
Wow.
Billion dollars?
You know, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what number to put on it. But, but what I will say is that, you know, the bones of the Village Center, I think, are okay. And, and I think that, you know, in terms of an environment, it's much different than what you, what you have down in Telluride. You know, which is, you know, classically historic, you know, Western, Western town. And so, you know, there are some places where, you know, you go and you say, okay, you need to blow it up and start over. And I don't think that's the case here. I, I think there are certainly investments that can be made in activating common areas. There are absolutely investments that need to be made in wayfinding. And there certainly are investments that need to, and I'm going to underline the word strategically, be made in tenant attraction. And that may be in tenant attraction efforts, but may also be in providing tenants with, you know, allowances to build out their spaces or if there's a tenant that's particularly important.
Well, that's a, that's a helpful answer, but it actually raises the question of why are we talking about a tax increment financing? This just doesn't sound like that much money, particularly given the resources of TMVOA and the town. Doesn't sound like, like the kind of money that you would need to set up a whole tax structure to, to achieve.
Well, an urban renewal authority does more than just simply, you know, invest in infrastructure. There, there are a number of things it can do, like revitalizing, revitalizing areas, you know, is just one of them. It could help with public-private partnerships. It can help with economic development strategies. It can provide financial incentives for investment. It can provide relocation assistance for businesses that might be displaced for one reason or another. So what we're recommending is that an urban renewal authority is something that's evaluated and evaluated sooner rather than later so that if you do decide that it is a helpful strategy, that you have the opportunity to take advantage of the tax increment that's going to be created soon. We, we also came up with the idea of a master lease recommendation. And this might tie into, it might tie into something that an urban renewal authority might want to invest in or be, you know, as perhaps a P3. So if you take, you know, a shopping center or a mall that has a single owner as, as an example, that owner has the ability to determine where tenants are, are going to go. You know, are they going to go, is the Apple Store going to go dead center? Or is it going to go, you know, off to the side? How do we want people to move through the mall? What have you? And because they're multiple owners and because there are owners that apparently are somewhat disinterested, that's not happening in the Village Center. So if one single entity had, if, if one single entity had, had control over retail space, then that sort of tenant curation or merchandising could be done. So this is an example of where an urban renewal authority might become part of a P3 to achieve a certain goal. I'm, I'm putting an asterisk on this because it really puts you in the position of being, or whoever is running, whoever's owning the master lease, whoever's going out and acquiring control of these properties in a position where it really needs to be very deliberate about risk reward and, and making, so it needs to be somebody who's sophisticated doing this sort of work. But that is one example of a place that a URA might have, you know, a nexus with a strategy. There also has been chatting about a vacancy tax. And, and that is something that, that I am recommending against. And I'm recommending against it, you know, as a card-carrying economist and because I believe that there's a lot of room for unintended consequences. Let me give you an example. Suppose you implement a vacancy tax. If I had a vacant space that I didn't particularly care about filling and I was, but I did care about tax avoidance, you know, so you've got a pipe rack and you wheel a pipe rack into the space, you put four dresses on the pipe rack and you hire a high school kid to go in and sit in front of the pipe rack for two hours every afternoon, no longer vacant, but it hasn't achieved your goal of vibrancy and creating sales tax. So the recommendation instead would be to do something like, figure out how much sales tax should this, should any given space or every space be able to produce in a given year? And then assess that amount as an ad valorem tax against the property. So the property owner on January 1st is paying the year's worth of sales tax that should be produced. And then over the course of the year, perhaps in quarterly payments, the owner's reimbursed for the sales tax that is actually produced. So you're incenting the behavior you want to create as opposed to trying to address the vacancy, you're trying to address making the owner want to get rid of the vacancy in a way that gets you the kind of vibrancy and sales tax that at the end of the day you want.
David, does it also though produce potentially another negative, which is that they don't put a pipe rack in, but maybe they open a t-shirt shop, which is the last thing you want? And yet it's generating, you know, it's paying the vacancy, or it's, it would pay the triple net and cover this, this other approach?
If, if you would indulge me, I'd like to address that when we get to the next slide after this one. Because I've got, I've, I, I have, I've got an answer for you already in the deck and we're, we're one away from it. Another strategy similar to a vacancy tax that could be used in lieu of or in addition to, it goes back to the common area maintenance charges that the town essentially pays for and doesn't seek reimbursement of. So you're managing and cleaning and maintaining all of the common areas in the Village Center. They're owned by the town. Yet the businesses are, are benefiting and really the landowners are benefiting because what the tenants might pay in reimbursements, the owners now get to charge as part of the base rent that they charge. So similarly, you could charge, you could charge the owners their proportionate share of the cost of maintaining the common areas and reimburse that, for example, to the extent of sales tax that is, that's achieved out of any given space. So again, triple, you know, addressing the triple net de facto subsidy that you're giving, addressing the vacancy tax, these are two things that might go hand in hand. And then to your question, which I think is a very good question, is, you know, how do you make sure that you get the mix, you know, mix that you want as opposed to a bunch of t-shirt shops? And that's not to cast dispersions on t-shirt shops because there certainly is, there certainly is a place for that sort of user, but we don't want 10 of them, right? So you could put a zoning lay over the Village Center that would require the town's approval. And when I say the town, I mean that it's something that would either be an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit, not up for a vote of the community. It would require the town's approval for any use. And so it would, it would give the town a seat at the table discussing tenant mix and curation. So on the one hand, you could make it expensive for people to have vacant spaces to, incent them to lease them. And on the other hand, you could put yourself at the table in the absence of there being a single owner saying, you know what, I think we have enough sporting goods stores, we're not going to approve another one, go find something else. This is about having the best environment from a retail perspective, not the easiest environment from a landlord's perspective. The thing I want to point out on this is that, you know, it really is a two-edged sword because you need to be careful that, that what's being approved or not approved is not subject to one person's tastes or an outspoken person's tastes, but really is paying attention to what, what represents the best possible mix and, and is a given use generally meet those guidelines or not. So, you know, in conclusion, I just, you know, would like to say that economic prosperity requires really more people visiting Mountain Village more often, staying longer, coming back and spending their money. And a strong retail base and one that is differentiated is an important piece of that. Done a lot of work in resort destinations. And one of the things that we repeatedly come back to, whether it's in wine country in California or whether it's on the big island of Hawaii, is the places where you end up having locals and visitors interacting, because both have reasons to be there, end up being the most interesting. There is authenticity to them, there's the ability for people to, to meet other people they wouldn't otherwise meet and to have an experience that they might not have in, you know, in a more managed, contrived environment. It's also important to remember that retail is constantly evolving. So there's no step-by-step playbook here. It's, retail is going to evolve. We haven't made a specific tenant mix recommendation because today's tenant mix is going to be different than the tenant mix three years from now or five years from now. And then finally, underlining the need for a champion. So that is the presentation and I'll get rid of the screen sharing here and happy to address as many questions as you would like to ask or have time to ask.
So I have a few things for discussion, but noting that he has a time constraint, I'd rather give it first to anyone who has questions for him.
So yeah, I have a follow-up question to the question that Scott Pearson asked. When, when he asked about the urban renewal authority, he asked how much money we would need to raise to do whatever it is the urban renewal authority would do. Slightly different question. You talked about capital improvements and you've, you've been through the village. What type of capital improvements would you see would benefit our whole retail and vibrancy in the core?
So I think the, I think the first thing is that you want to, you want to have a wayfinding program that really encourages people to move through the various parts of the Village Center, through the various plazas. Sunset Plaza is, is a terrific environment, but it's really off to the up. So how do you get people that are all the way on the other side of the Village Center to know that they want to go there? And the current wayfinding program really doesn't, doesn't do that. It's not, so wayfinding can help people move and then retailers themselves help people move through because you begin to notice that there's something interesting. move through because you begin to notice that there's something interesting, you know, that you can see down the road or around the corner and you want to go find out what it is. The second thing is, I think that there's been some, you know, there's been some good progress of actually activating the common areas in the village center. The use of old gondola, you know, gondola cars as places, you know, to sit and have a coffee or a bite to eat, you know, some of the food trucks. I was delighted when I was taking a break from doing my survey work and somebody just walked around with a tray and a chocolate chip cookie. I mean, those things are really good, but more can be done. There's, there, and, and those things that you use to activate the common area, whether their activities, whether their performances, whether they are, you know, more food carts or whether there are kiosks where people are selling things, they, they make it a more vibrant environment, they make it a more interesting environment. So, and, and then, you know, finally, I think that there's, that there are amenities that could be augmented even more than the attention that's already been given them. Fire pits with Adirondack chairs around the fire pits are terrific, but, but even more of that because if you've, let me give you an example. Let, let's suppose that you, you come back from skiing, the kids are in childcare until five, it's four o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, you want people to not go get their kids and go back to where they're staying. You want them to stay in the village center and go, you know, grab a drink or grab, grab a bite to eat or, you know, mom and dad have a little bit of time to just sit down somewhere and spend some time together. And people want to be where people are. So it's amenities that make the village center a place that, that is very inviting to stay in. And, and that can be, that can be in the form of amenities, but it could also be in the form of somebody playing music. It could be in the form of activities that are programmed. So those are just a few ideas.
Any other comments? Anybody on Zoom?
Go first. We do have a hand raised if you want to.
I guess I have one other question, which is, you talked about a master lease program?
Yes.
I'm trying to imagine practically and realistically how our town would do something like that, given that, you know, most of the retail space is owned by Telsky and all the retail space, if you put the tiny exceptions, is owned by individual private owners who would probably be reluctant to give up authority over leasing.
Well, the, the, the way it would work is you'd be giving them a guaranteed rent payment for their retail space. So regardless of whether or not it's leased, they know that they're getting a check for X amount of dollars every month and then it becomes the master lessor's responsibility to actually lease the space. Now, there needs to be enough spread in that number that, that you're able to do that for, and operate breakeven or profitably. But owners who are getting an absolute guaranteed payment should be willing to take less than what they would need to get from a, you know, from a tenant because A, they have no vacancy from a, from a cash flow perspective. B, they've got no tenant improvement allowances, they've got no brokerage commissions, they've, they've got no collection delinquencies because the master lessor has taken on all of that risk. And so the entity who would do that, I think, would be somebody that is experienced managing specialty retail areas that would then come in, would make a proposal for how it would work, create a budget, work with, work with the town on creating a program and then, you know, making the pitch to property owners. If property owners are suddenly also having to deal with, you know, a vacancy or a triple net assessment and a zoning overlay, which makes it more expensive and makes it more difficult to operate that retail space, they also might be more inclined to sign up for a guaranteed payment for no work, even if it's less than they would get directly from a tenant.
Got it, understood, thank you.
Sure.
So I really appreciated this report and all the effort that went into it and spent a lot of time digesting it. And I also appreciate Matt's conversation really like teeing it up and I hope that a lot of us are hearing the themes and the repetitiveness and I'm not going to belabor any of the kind of previous commentary about where we have struggles and tension, but what I do want to focus on is looking at like the reality of the largest chunks of where our tax base is as a town are coming from our lodgers and our homeowners. And so I think that this retail component is a small piece of the tax and rather than being so focused on how that tax number grows, I feel like the focus is on how we create the most desirable experience for our homeowners and residents and our visitors who are utilizing the lodging. And then we're going to see that natural growth in the tax, whereas sometimes our focus is on like, how do we drive the finances? I think in this case, it's very experience-driven and we want to hear those voices. You know, people who live here, live here over Vale and Aspen. And one of the common commentaries that we hear in the community that I've heard for, you know, 20 years is like, we don't want to turn into that, we don't want to become them. And when I hear that, what I really feel like it means is I don't want my community to become a community that I don't recognize anymore. And I think that we want to know and see our neighbors and I think that we have a really great example of what works. We know what works here. If you walk down Main Street of Telluride, I can name for you every single business owner and operator of every business that has lasted. And when I come up here in Mountain Village, we know all of our very successful merchants because we know them by name because their owner, operators, synonymous with their brands. If they're not the owners, they portray that sense of ownership. And so I think there's a lot that we know really intuitively about what's going to be able to take his recommendations and make them successful for us and help us find that place of bridging the authenticity. And I do think we have to be aware of the fact that like, Mountain Village is a planned resort community. And so there is a little bit of tension there in helping us to connect with our authentic voice and our branding. In terms of where I see kind of staff direction, personally, I think a nimble task force, not necessarily like the entirety of BDAG and not just the town, but if we could create some type of a smaller group to work quickly towards some of these recommendations, creating an aim statement, a goal statement, sort of ranking and choosing strategies of where we're going to go and then operationalizing things into some timelining and then kind of bringing that back, that's where I would like to see it go. I don't want us to get too stuck into like choice paralysis or like too much like consensus seeking, like everybody has to be in agreement. I think that we, we have made, you, you have made really amazing steps and like building on what's going well and what's working really well is a priority for me personally. And then where I land on some of these things is I, you know, the URA component, I think I'd like to see that analyzed further, you know, perhaps by a task force type of thing. There is this like, oh, we're adding another entity, we're adding another group, but also like an independent group might be able to ease some tension in some places where things are struggling. I'm a no on vacancy tax, master lease, I'm a no for now. I think that would maybe be like a later step down the road and I am a yes on common area incentives. Those are my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind if we release David because I think he had to go? So David, if you're still listening, please feel free to take off.
I've, I've pushed my thing back a little bit, so I'm happy to stay for a few more minutes in case there are any questions as you chat.
Anybody on Zoom? Any comments?
No, I just thank you, Ellie, for, that was a really thorough and thoughtful response and I, I agree with you on, on all those things and I think I'm very aligned with kind of where you landed on a lot of those things, especially continuing to kind of analyze URA. And I'm, yeah, similarly a little skeptical on the master lease.
In a way, we did do a master lease to the max when we bought the reset space. We stepped in, we bought it and we didn't just lease it for 10 years. So we, we, but I, I think, I'm more open to master lease than I think some people are, but although I, I would say we have to, we have to fill the reset space before we would take on another liability.
I agree.
And then the URA, I would say, I think we should seriously investigate that because I think that could be a financial tool to potentially deal with some of the underinvestment. But needs to be done quickly. And then the vision statement, I think as, as a, I, I do think that we, we, we need to get everybody on the same page with what, what is the vision for this community between the merchants, maybe, maybe we can't with Telsky, but I, I think if we could come up with a crisp vision statement for what this community wants to be, I, I think that would help us, help us navigate.
And that, that's repeat whatever else said, but one area that still is a question mark for me is, what came through in the report was really just the idea of, you know, going out and recruiting retailers, I mean, pulling them in, you know, the right ones. And I just don't know how that works in a governmental context and I would like to understand that a little bit better because that seems to me critical, which is you don't just sit back and say, you know, let the landlord, you know, do a lease with whoever walks in the door and wants to rent the space. It's really this curation and finding the right retailers and going out and quote-unquote recruiting them. And that, that's a question mark for me as far as how that actually works in this, in our world. I understand how it might work in a single owner of a mall, but how it works in our situation.
I had one thought in that regard, which is that, you know, our summer market is really gaining traction and we're seeing more and more certain of the retailers who are becoming attractions, as, as David said, you know, both for locals and visitors. And I, you know, it's an interesting question whether any of those, that can almost be like a farm lease, excuse the pun, and any of those who then potentially could be induced or recruited to open a year-round store.
Scott, I'll just jump in here. Since I ran the market, I had three vendors this summer approach me asking for vacant space and wanting to get a spot in Mountain Village and I directed them to the sole vacant spaces that are in this destination and unfortunately, none of them have been able to move forward with that, with leases, so.
That's where a master lease can help.
So yes, there's, there's certainly interest.
David, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, I, I wanted to respond to Councilmember Morrison's comment because I think you make a really important point. The town, absent some sort of rubric like a master lease, the town and economic development function in the town should not try to become a leasing agent because you're trying to insert yourself in, you know, you're trying to be a broker, you're trying to control something over which you have no control, you don't own the space, you don't control the tenant. But it's laying the groundwork of creating the compelling place, whether it's infrastructure or policy or removing friction or incentivizing owners to transact that, that you can do. Combined with a, a marketing campaign to let the world know, this is what's going on here and this is our brand and this what's make, this is what makes us different from every other place and this is why you should come look at us. But like Molly said, you know, it's, it's a travesty that you have empty spaces and people interested in being in them and you can't even get traction from the owner of the space to do a pop-up. I mean, that's just, I mean, what is to be gained there? And so that, that falls into the incentives category, if you will, of let's make it expensive and inconvenient for you to leave it empty.
David, do you see a scenario where the town or another entity would ever solicit a broker to work on behalf of the town or the larger community? Maybe pay, you know, have a, a fee structure where their commission then is less on, you know, the actual matchmaking to benefit the, the owner?
So again, if, if I was a broker, brokers are transaction oriented, they get paid when they transact. So you've got to pay them the opportunity cost of the transactions they wouldn't be doing because they're paying attention to Mountain Village. And, you know, the, the owners of property certainly would not be compelled to pay somebody the town might hire, but would somebody, so I think it looks more like somebody who's really used to curating destination places and is, is used to creating places and doing placemaking that, with, specifically with respect to retail, that that's, I think, the better advisor. And, you know, we could offline certainly brainstorm one who some of those people might be.
But David, you, you mentioned in the report that none of our listings, our vacant listings are on any of the national listing services like Crexxy or LoopNet. Did that surprise you?
Shocked me.
I, I mean, for, for a tenant to be able to find us, they've got to know that it's available and if, if it's not online, it's not available.
Well, and, and some of them, you, I mean, when I was there, I walked around and there was a vacant space and there wasn't even a phone number. I was literally going to have to go to title to figure out who owned it and then track it down through the Secretary of State's office to get the statement of information to figure out who to call. I mean, it's just, it's, that, that's somebody who does not want to lease space. And, you know, there, there's sort of this, this joke that we all make that it's like, okay, well, I guess that space isn't there only, you know, $2 million. But, but that, that's really what it is. It's like somebody who's got so much other stuff that they don't care.
Yeah, that, that or they just don't really have the right people or enough people to be able to, to make those decisions or get in front of these issues. And I know that there are some representatives from Telsky listening right now and I, I hope that some of these considerations can be taken to the people who actually can make decisions on these things because I think that the work has been done for them and they just need to follow through. I mean, there's some very easy, low-hanging fruit that could be fixed tomorrow if, if someone were empowered to do so.
And I, my only comment would be that if you have vacant space and you don't have the right person to be able to transact, that that's just another flavor of not interested in transacting.
Okay. I think we need to, I think we have some direction here.
Let me, can I ask, what form or what, or what group should this be contemplated? Is this a BDAG thing? Is this a special working group? What, what form? How do we move forward on this? What, what form, how do we move forward on this?
I mean, in theory, it could be B D E C, it could be,
I see a smaller group that comes back to B D E C.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it needs to be a group that is willing to be engaged over a short amount of time to really get through some of these stuff, this stuff. I mean, going through a U R A process and learning about that is not necessarily at the top of the list for some people. And that's not a criticism. But I think that we do need the input of some of those folks to understand if it's something that's going to be supported or if it's going to be just yet another thing that is the target for criticism.
I think I could see us taking his spreadsheet of strategies and then expanding that out, right? And doing more of our own analysis of them with, you know, risk reward, cost, time, et cetera. And get, and getting a little more nitty gritty into that.
Keith, there is public comment on Zoom from Dan Jansen, if you want to entertain public comment.
Dan? I guess you have to admit him?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, a very important discussion. Thank you for having it. And I think someone mentioned before, like, hey, we don't get a lot of sales tax revenue from retail. We get it from hospitality in our, our residents. But retail, I think, would really drive the experience of those important people. It reminds me of a conversation I had when I was mayor with an owner and operator of a business in Heritage Plaza. And he pointed at the gondola and he said, what do you see? I see, I, I see a wonderful free transportation system. He said, I see my potential customers flying over my business to go eat and shop in town. So full disclosure, my wife owns a shop on Main Street. I co-own it, but we know who runs the place. She's contemplated, it's doing great, a second location in Mountain Village. And that's because there's a lot of good momentum, thanks to many of you and others, let alone the Four Seasons, Sixth Sense, whatever. But when there's an elephant in a room, I think it's important to introduce it. And with our T S G friends on the phone, I would respectfully say they control a fair amount of the retail food and beverage space in Mountain Village. And they have the ability to charge rent or charge no rent. When you talk to the people who run their businesses, they don't spend cash flow on rent. And, and, and for someone to come into Mountain Village and compete with a subsidized competitor like that is very difficult. And just by way of example, let's say your rent's 10 grand and you have a retail multiple of 2.2. That's $250,000 of sales you have to have to just be even with the shop next door. And God bless them, you know, that's why they own all the space, they can do that. But until you can address that disparity, I think you'll have a hard time attracting anything but national competitors. If you want Lululemon, you can get them. If you want a locally owned and operated business, they probably can't compete. So I would encourage you to avoid anything that raises the costs. A U R A sounds like a way of raising the cost to potential tenants via triple net, you know, expenses and other fees that get passed along to the tenant. My wife's rent in town went up 30% this year because we keep passing more milk, many of which are wonderful and promising. So I would strongly encourage you to explore the master lease option. It allows you to create incentives to attract specialty, high end retailers like my wife's business. It allows you to curate and it allows you to level the playing field a little bit so somebody could come in and want to compete with the other stores in town. And a completely separate subject, Elizabeth left a couple of hours ago and I wanted to tell her, mark me down as a resident who loves the mill reduction idea. You got at least one. I'm guessing, I'm guessing I speak for many others and I would encourage you guys, it's a wonderful move you're making for a bunch of reasons. Now, 80 bucks or whatever it is, who cares? But, but you're sending a message. And I would encourage you to tell all the under taxing districts that you're doing this and ask them, have you guys thought about this? Thank you.
We did. Thanks, Dan. Okay. All right, can we move on to the next? So can you?
Thank you, David.
Snowmaking?
I'll get us.
Thank you, everyone.
Four minutes back?
I'll get us four minutes back. At our October meeting, we discussed imposing snowmaking rates, which has been an ongoing discussion. Council directed staff to have additional conversations with T S G staff. We have been doing that and I want to thank Marty Whitmore in particular from T S G for her collaboration and hard work as we try and find a path with respect to snowmaking rates that benefits not only the community, the town as an organization, but T S G as well. And we intend to come back in December with a more thorough report and hopefully some solutions on that issue.
Town Water and Sewer Enterprises. Is David?
David is up in the sky.
David?
I'm here. Hi. So this item is really a housekeeping matter. The town has been operating Water and Sewer Enterprises for years. That is an animal under the taper amendment to the Colorado Constitution that basically allows a business operated by a town to live and die on its own revenues. And so long as it's not taking money out of the general taxes, it can do things like borrow money without a vote as long as that's not being paid back with taxes. So this is a housekeeping matter, just to get some documentation in place for the future, if and when we ever need it. So that's it. There would be two separate enterprises, one for water, one for sewer, which is how Elizabeth wants to handle the accounting. And that's all I got.
Okay. Is there a motion on this?
I move to approve the ordinance regarding the establishment and operation of the Town Water and Sewer Enterprise on first reading and ask the town clerk to set a public hearing on the ordinance for December 11th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Carrie's? All right. So we're going to have a public hearing, council vote for changes to the municipal code.
I think my colleague, yep, there's Matthew, he's going to walk us through this.
Yes, so this is an updated version of the ordinance that was presented to council last month. Importantly, the proposed section 9.01.080 that would have given certain municipal employees the ability to promulgate rules for certain municipal property has been removed at, at the direction of council. The remaining changes that are still in place, first, we have grammatical change clarifying who a keeper of an animal is under the municipal code title addressing animals. This is just to provide a little bit of clarity around the edges in terms of who controls an animal. Next, we have a change giving more detail to the town's dog bark prohibition. As written, code does prohibit this, but it simply says you can't have a dog that barks too much. And it doesn't have any type of enforcement mechanism. So as written, the new code section, it would clarify that there is an escalating fine scale for individuals who have a dog that barks too much. And it would also create a new mechanism that makes it easier for the Mountain Village Police Department to investigate and issue fines for violations. So there's a new system where you would have to complain to the police officer or have the police officer witness the continual nuisance barking. The next change is to the vicious animal code section. Vicious animals are also presently prohibited within town code. But it's a little bit vague around the edges. It just says that it can't be, the vicious animal can't, what is it? Bite or claw another person in a vicious or terrorizing manner or an apparent attitude of attack, which is a little bit vague. And so we wanted to clean that up to make it a little bit more clear what is allowed and not allowed. And importantly, this section also creates some new enforcement mechanisms and gives the police department and municipal judge the authority to impose a to bite rule. And this section mentioning euthanasia of an animal has been revised to clarify that it is the last resort. The next change is the section 8.01.080, which corrects a typo. The next change is the section 8.08.030, which abolishes a specific penalty for violating the motor vehicle ordinance. That ordinance was passed in 2002, so this gives the municipal judge a little bit more flexibility. The next change is to 8.12.130, which clarifies that the standard of proof for public nuisances is a preponderance of the evidence. Previously, that wasn't clarified and this makes it that a little bit more straightforward in terms of enforcement going forward. The next change is to 9.01.010, which cleans up petty theft and raises the amount. As previously written, there were two separate classes and I believe the penalty or the violation capped out at $300. That ordinance, I believe, was passed in 1996. So this adjusted up to $2,000. The next is an amendment to the disorderly conduct code section, which is taken directly from state law. It removes one provision that has been, been held unconstitutional by the Colorado Supreme Court, revises another one to add that you can discharge firearms at a veteran's funeral when, with blanks. And then it adds another section to clarify that the prohibited conduct is brandishing something that appears to be a firearm and not just a deadly weapon, which again is to mere state law. The next change is to section 9.05.010, which does insert a new provision into town code. This is a type of minor assault provision. In terms of criminalizing bodily injury, this would allow the town to now do that in municipal court. Major cases where victims' costs are still going to be sought would still be tried in county court. The next change, 9.17.010, allows for the chief of police to approve archery ranges. The next change is to section 10.12, which allows last mile delivery vehicles. And this section has also been changed at the direction of council to allow for three wheeled vehicles when those vehicles are properly insured and driven by a properly licensed driver. And then the final change is to the model traffic code to clean up when you must stop for school buses.
Chief, do you want to say anything?
I just answer any questions if you have any, in the interest of time especially.
Okay.
One, one quick sort of policy, whatever kind of question. I mean, a number of these things, which might be fine, but they, a number of these things might also be a violation under county, state or federal. How, how does it interact if, you know, if there's an assault or if there's a theft? How do you know whether it's our code or the state code or some other thing that is applied?
Kind of like what Matthew said, it kind of depends on the severity. And to be perfectly honest, a, a minor theft or I hate to call it a minor assault, but in minor assault, it's not significant injuries. Sometimes county court is so busy that that gets overlooked and gets dismissed. And so we probably get more justice for our residents and visitors within our municipal court system than we might in our county court system.
So, so on a case by case basis, you would choose, is what you're saying? You'd choose the, either our code or county or something else?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions from part of council?
I, a question on the last mile delivery vehicles. We don't really define what it is and I'm going to suggest that we call last mile delivery vehicle is a vehicle with soft rubber tires or soft wheeled vehicle, just because of the issues we're having in the core.
So would that be a move to approve with that change?
Yes.
I will ask you, Tucker.
We, we got to ask for a public comment first? Any public comment out there? We could try them.
Nothing online.
Nope. Okay. Do a, can I have a motion?
I will move to finally adopt ordinance 2025, amending provisions and titles 6, 8, 9, and 10 of the Town of Mountain Village municipal code with the changes as stated.
We have seconds?
Second.
With the change of the soft.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. What's that?
I said thank you.
Oh. All right. Winter parking rates.
I can also be pretty quick about this, given that we've already discussed parking rates in the past and those rates can be found at our website. They will go, and winter parking rates will go into effect when the ski area opens. But our ability to impose rates is, to an extent, governed by a covenant that exists on the parking garage. And it says that we need to seek T S G's consent in order to impose parking rates. The M O U that is in your packet is a document signed by T S G authorizing the imposition of the rates that were previously approved by council. And so we're looking for council to approve that M O U today. Again, residents can find not only information about the actual parking rates, but information about purchasing season passes that will reduce those rates on our website. And the rates will become effective when the mountain opens.
I have a question. Do we have any backup from T S G legal counsel or T S G owner that verifies the approval for signature by someone else other than the T S G owner?
I don't have that. I have seen other signatures on other documents recently, so I do believe that that is becoming a practice. That said, I think that we can sign the, we can get authorization for the mayor to execute the M O U and I can make that contingent on getting that confirmation.
I would highly suggest that.
Yes, sir.
Any public comment on the parking rates? I don't see anything. Okay. About a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between T S G and the Town of Mountain Village regarding parking at the Gondola parking garage and metals parking lot contingent upon obtaining proper backup to verify signatory.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. Keep moving along here. Okay, special event guidelines.
That's us. Good evening, council. Hopefully we can be speedy with this as well. So we are reviewing, bringing recommendations to town council for amendments to the special event regulations and all the subsequent changes that go along once we start changing those regulations. So the special, the current special event regulations are pretty out of date, both special event and busking regulations. And so this, the workload or the workflow of those applications have changed hands a number of times, a number of departments over the years. So it's currently with me. And so I've taken the time to update them, bring them up to date with how I actually process special events and busking applications. Once I started updating those, there's a number of areas of the regulations that just aren't feasible in how it, how they are processed. We'll talk about that. And then events have just evolved over time. So summary of the changes, hopefully you saw these all in your packet. Essentially, we've refined the definition to correct and clarify what a special event is. We've moved the classifications of special events to a guidelines document so that we don't have to come and make a CDC amendment for such a, a minor event thing. And then we've added definition of tents. The special event regulations themselves, the biggest changes were reviewing, updating the review authority. It was currently in the regulations in the planning department. It now falls in the economic development department, but we've also added language so that we don't have to deal with this. If it changes departments again down the road, we don't have to keep updating this. And we've added some specific language regarding tents. The review procedures is the most significant change. Essentially, the regulations pointed the review procedures for special events to the planning review process, which has a lot of deadlines, a lot of noticing, a lot of things that we just simply don't do for special events. Special events are also very fluid. I'm not getting a lot of details on special events till probably four weeks out, just like Oktoberfest was planned with four weeks notice. That's how a lot of events go versus the planning world. A lot of those things have a much more stringent deadline. So we've stolen from other municipalities and their good work in special events and came up with a review procedure that provides us the flexibility to actually review special events. The exemptions pieces are pretty administrative changes. And then the busking had the same issue. It was pointing to the planning. issue. It was pointing to the planning review procedures, which certainly don't do for reviewing a busking application.
Molly, before we move past busking, just a quick clarification. I don't, I assume busking requires an application or a, a, a proceed, a prob, I can't talk, a, an app, an approval. So, just as an observation, many of the performers that are on, you know, doing concerts, whether it's the Friday night concert, whether they're at the, at the bandstand in Heritage, in Heritage Plaza, whatever, you know, they, they put a hat or something else out there. Do we think that's busking, or do they need, how do we want to, how do we want to deal with that informal, you know, event that takes place when they're, actually they're paid and it's part of a concert or something?
Definitely. So the different levels, so the Friday night concerts, sunset, those are special events, so those fall under the special event rules, and we don't have anything regulating, you know, whether or not they're asking for, for donations. The busking that happens on the stage, so like TMVOA hires the musicians that play on the, the stage, that TMVOA applies for a busking permit for all of those performers, and the busking regulations do allow for them to acquire tips or donations, and there's just a signage regulation. I can't recall it off the top of my head, but it's something they have to have a certain size sign that states that.
So it sounds like we're covered. I just want to make sure there wasn't a gap, that's all.
Yep.
What triggered this? What problem are we trying to solve here?
Uh, only administrative issues. Like, literally on my end, as I'm updating the process, that if, say, an event, I didn't follow the procedures as they're outlined in the code right now, and somebody, and I denied an event, they could come back and say, oh, you didn't follow the process that's in the CDC that you're supposed to follow, but it's physically impossible. It's like, not possible to follow.
Are you trying to streamline the approval process?
Streamline the process of me reviewing these applications and approving them.
This isn't a result of the big structure that got built on and rolled through.
No, no. This, I have been working on this for at least twelve months, so this is not...
As I was reading it, that's what I thought this was talking about.
I'll just add, I think that is a good example of why we need to update these procedures, because before, the procedures were very, either you didn't get a special events permit or you did, and there wasn't any rightsizing or contextualization of those different types of events, and so this is way more context sensitive to the things that are actually going on, including things like the wedding, which didn't technically fall into our previous definition of a special event, but turned out to be quietly production, so, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was always mine. You know, we approved a little tiny tent up on Coonskin Ridge, and we didn't approve this huge structure.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
And just maybe following up on Keith's point, and maybe it comes later in the discussion, but have we received any feedback from, you know, people who are in the business of doing events and will be complying with these new procedures? Any, any feedback, that yes or no, good or bad?
Uh, no, we haven't received any, any comments. I don't think much of what, most of the procedural changes, other than the tents, really don't have much of an impact on our special events, because it's how we've been doing it. The rules just didn't align with what.
Okay, I was just curious if we got any feedback, just because they're going to live with it, so I wonder if...
Totally.
Well, this is the, this is the first reading, right? So there'll be a public hearing and opportunity to comment at second reading.
Exactly.
Molly, I have a question. If I have a summer garden party in my backyard, and I invite sixty people, and I get a caterer, am I subject to a special events permit?
Depends on what you're setting up.
Yeah.
Not, no tent. I'm just, you know, I'm inviting friends to an outdoor garden party, and I'm not charging. I'm having a party in my backyard.
Most likely not.
And why?
You have parking, one of the...
The definition that says...
Right, so if you have parking needs, it depends on, again, not just the tents, but if you have parking, the impact, noise, it would just depend on, on the impact.
I know, there's, there's other...
I mean, I'm...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Counselor.
I just read the definition. It says, "Any organized gathering of people sponsored by a for-profit or nonprofit individual." Now, I'm not sure if, if I acting my own am a nonprofit or for-profit individual. I don't even know what a for-profit individual is. But I would hope that...
Or not.
A homeowner in town is having a party in their backyard, it's very clear that they don't, and they're not having a tent, that it's very clear that they don't need a permit.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and under the previous guidelines or the previous regulations, they, they would not, but I was going to say, what, there are other things that are, need to be met, like parking. If there are structures that are put up, they need to meet, meet certain building requirements, so just because you may or may not need a special events permit doesn't mean there aren't other considerations taken into account.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I'm having a bunch of people, I may call the police department and, and just say, is it all right if people parked on the street this afternoon, and they'll say, yeah, no problem, thanks for letting us know. I just would hate to turn it into something more than that.
Yeah.
And, and I hope that we can make this crystal clear, that if you're not setting up a structure in your backyard, you're having, you're an individual who's having a party that you don't need a special event permit.
Correct. Yeah, and actually, that portion of the definition isn't changed. It might look that way, but we essentially just deleted and rewrote the definition, I think, in the red line, but that is where, you know, it, it does get tricky, because that definition can be vague, but if you go down below that section to the three points, that it has to meet two of the three criteria, where it's either on town property, has an impact, requires town resources, or has substantial, like, noise and impact. So unless, that's like, you can throw a birthday party, you know, and it doesn't meet any of those three things, then you don't need a permit. So, it's not just that first section you're reading, but it's the following, it has to meet two of the three following things.
So if I'm a not-for-profit, and I'm having a hundred donors come to a big house over on Hole Eight, a lot of cars, do they need a permit?
Uh, you probably need to check on the police department on parking, and if chief said, hey, you need to get a permit for a special event.
Usually, I call chief and said, we're having all these people, and he'll tell me, just make sure you park on one side of the road.
There you go. Then no. He wouldn't refer it to a special event.
Well, because everything that you guys are describing are gatherings in a private residence. It'd be different if you're going to go rent, you know, the ballroom at the Peaks or something like that, or, or Hole Eight, for that matter, then, then it would require a permit. I'm just not sure how you, how you communicate this and how you enforce it. That's just what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah. I mean, maybe we say explicitly, if it's in a private residence, and it does not involve any structures, and it involves, you know, fewer than a hundred and fifty people, that it's not, it doesn't require something, something clearer.
Scott knows a lot. Well, I, I suppose that's the point I was trying to make, Scott, is versus, instead of getting too granular, I think it's implied that what, what you do at your home is what you do at your home, unless there's an impact, right? If, if you throw a party and everybody takes dollar ride, but then you get a noise complaint, then it becomes a problem, but it's your house, right? Because otherwise, you start getting granular into what you can or cannot do.
And it still allows...
People in those homes.
And it still allows staff flexibility to say, no, that's not a, a special event. So...
It's a private home. I mean, if you could fit two hundred people, you could fit two hundred people. It's your private home.
Well, that's, I, I agree with that. I just think the way that the actual rules are written, it's, it's not that crystal clear, and I think if we're going to go to the trouble of changing these regs, we should make it crystal clear.
Yeah, I, I think of some Women Network events that I've been to, a lot of people, are we going to preclude them from, you know?
No, that's not the intent at all, and they currently don't get a permit. I mean, if they are happening, I've not permitted any of them, so. This is truly for, again, it still has to meet those three criteria, so it's not just any gathering of people. It's any gathering of people that meets two of the three things. I can pull it. How do I stop?
The, the way it's written, it says any one or more of the criteria.
Um, I have the, there we go.
Couldn't find it.
Text. Well, then, that is a good catch. That should be two or more.
Oh, okay.
That was a edit, when we, probably missed that when we rewrote it, so it should be any two or more of the criteria.
Well, that's helpful, okay.
Yes. Good catch.
Any, any other comment? Any public comment?
Uh, nothing online.
Well, I'll just, I have two more slides.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To cover. So, the tents, this has been a conversation much longer than the, the wedding tents, but very timely, so we just provided, this graphic just helps illustrate what the regulations stipulate for tents, and at what level, you need what permissions, which really is driven by the international building and international fire codes. And then with this, we create the special event guidelines document, so that's removing portions of the definition of special events, where we went into what's a major and a minor event, pulling that out of the CDC and putting that into a guidelines document, again, so I don't have to come back here and get a CDC amendment for something like that. And then it further defines and provides a little more flexibility on what is a minor versus major event. Right now, it's defined by like a thousand people attending and multiple days is a major versus minors. Almost everything is a minor event in our destination, even though a lot of those minor events have very major impacts. So we've tried to better define that in the guidelines, and so we would also leave it to town council to discuss. Our recommendation would be that we, as town staff, could modify and edit that guidelines document, but we could also bring it to town council to be adopted by resolution whenever edits needed to be made to those guideline documents or document. The DRB made a recommendation to approve these revisions and the guideline documents, and we are also, so I've also provided a proposed motion for you. Now, any questions?
No. Any public comment? Did you talk to me and Fee? I mean, she does a lot of event planning, right?
She does, she doesn't, she only does one pretty minor event with the town.
Like weddings?
But, like, Gay Ski Week, that's a big one that's coming up this winter, but, yeah, we can, between the next reading, we can...
I'm sure she'd take your call and just say, this is what we're thinking about. You have any, any concerns?
For sure, yeah. Again, I'll definitely do that. I don't think many of these changes will, our event organizers will realize any impact.
Okay. All right.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance regarding the proposed changes to the Community Development Code, section seventeen point six point two, special event regulations, seventeen point eight point one definition, seventeen point six point seven busking regulations, and seventeen point four two, table four one, development application classes attached tier two as exhibit A, and the adoption of the special event guidelines attached tier two as exhibit B, and set a public hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
So, we've made up some time.
Ten, five minutes, ten minutes?
Five minutes for dinner? Yeah. Can we do a working dinner?
Yeah.
Because we're going to go late as it, as it is. Okay.
So, what, what did you just say, five minutes?
Yes.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Okay, let's get started. Uh, application for lot forty-two B, unit forty-one C.
Just waiting for my ability to share screen here.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Um, there it goes. A little bit of a lag. Are you ready? Mm-hmm. Good. Okay. Um, thank you, councilors. Uh, this is a first reading of a request for a density transfer and rezone for lot forty-two B, unit forty-one C. Uh, the owner in Napton is Mike Shimconis of Fort Peak's Properties LLC. The property is in the, um, Blue Mesa Lodge. Uh, it is zoned village center. It is a, uh, and the zoning designation is a efficiency lodge. The proposed zoning designation is a lodge and the lot size is point two acres. So by way of background, in two thousand twenty, a number of the units at Blue Mesa Lodge went through a density transfer and rezone process, uh, to bring units that were being lived in full time into compliance by rezoning from efficiency lodge to lodge designation. Uh, some units that were, uh, not being lived in full time opted to not go through the process. Presumably this unit was one of those. Um, so the applicant, um, has now requested for this density transfer rezone on November sixth, two thousand twenty-five. The DRB unanimously recommended approval of the density transfer and rezone. So the case summary is that, um, Fort Peak's Properties has submitted an application, uh, to, for the density transfer and rezone. The applicant, uh, requests to transfer point two five person equivalents of density for a total of point seven five person equivalents of density to allow for the, uh, property to be rezoned from efficiency lodge to lodge designation. The applicant owns parking space four in the Gondola Plaza parking garage, which is, um, underneath, um, or is directly adjacent to the Blue Mesa Lodge underground. Uh, it fulfills the Blue, uh, excuse me, it fulfills the point five parking space requirement for a lodge unit. The applicant plans to purchase the additional point two five, uh, density units required for this density transfer from the density bank. Um, they request that this application be approved conditionally for eighteen months before which they must rent, uh, purchase the additional, uh, density from the bank. So, uh, just, if you're not familiar, uh, individual units have a density zoning designation associated with it that requires a certain amount of density. Um, an efficiency lodge is a zoning designation that is defined as inhabitable, one-room space with a separate bath and limited kitchen facilities for short-term accommodations. A lodge, on the other hand, is defined as a two-room space plus a mezzanine with up to two separate baths and a full kitchen that may be, uh, resided in full time. Uh, like, uh, unit forty-one C is already a two-room space plus mezzanine with a one bathroom and full kitchen. Therefore, it already qualifies to be rezoned to a lodge designation without a renovation.
So it does have a full kitchen?
Um, yes, that, that is our understanding, uh, but, um, we are, we can require visual, uh, confirmation as a condition of approval. I was gonna address that question. So just another way of visualizing this, um, we're moving from efficiency lodge to lodge. Um, the only change to the density bank is adding that point two five person equivalents of density to, um, to the, um, to the unit. So there are a number of criteria for decision associated with this process. I didn't list them all out here in the presentation, but I just highlighted a few here, um, on, uh, the screen. The first is criterion A for a rezoning process. Adequate public facilities and services are available to serve the intended land use. Um, this, in this case, the primary, uh, public facility would be, uh, parking space and the, uh, applicant has demonstrated they own a full parking space.
So for time?
I can go by this.
It meets all the criteria.
It meets all the criteria. That's fine. Yes.
Daniel, where is Gondola Plaza parking garage?
Sure. Um, I included a plat map here. It's, it's underneath the La Piazza, uh, outdoor eating area.
Okay.
Yeah. Directly adjacent to the, uh, to the structure.
So they meet all the criteria that we outlined?
They meet all the criteria. Sure, I can move on.
Okay.
Um, and also for the sake of time, I won't read through all the findings, but they do meet all the requirements, um, for rezoning. Therefore, staff recommends approval of, um, the first reading of a density transfer and rezone for lot forty-two B, forty-one C, um, subject to the conditions, including the condition that the, uh, approval is, uh, is valid for eighteen months. Uh, if, and if the density units are not obtained by then, it expires. Also, there are several administrative and clerical tasks that must happen after the approval, including a class one application to actually execute the density transfer. I've also provided a motion for continuance. And then I did, uh, also list out the questions received, uh, by, uh, councillor Mogginson before the, uh, meeting. I am happy to answer them now, or, um, you can pepper me with questions as you see, please.
I think, I think you addressed all of them except question three, if you wanna just touch on that.
Oh, sure thing. Um, so we, um, that question also came up in the DRB and it's come up in previous iterations of this process. In the previous iterations, the applicant has never been required to tie the title of the parking space with the unit. Um, therefore, uh, we would find that it'd be unfair to the applicant to begin that requirement as part of this, uh, application. Um, however, in the end, that is, uh, the council's prerogative to require such a thing.
So what would happen if it's, if they're transferred separately then? Would, I, I guess as a practical matter, how would we go back in and rechange the designation that it, because it wouldn't qualify for the, for the next owner?
We, it would have to be through a compliance, uh, enforcement mechanism. Uh, are you saying if the parking is sold without the unit?
Or if the unit is sold without the parking, either one, yeah.
Well, then either one would, or then the unit would become, um, out of compliance and then, um, if it would, it would have to be an enforcement, um, action.
But if they're tied together, it's easier to spot that, right?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. I mean, I understand your point about you didn't do it in the past, but we can always get better. It seems like a logical thing to me where if the parking is required for that designation, um, why not, why not link them together?
Understood. Um, perhaps, uh, David, town attorney, could, uh, weigh in. I think he had a more substantive answer to the DRB's question about this.
David?
I don't remember if I did or not, but I guess my, my answer would be what, uh, what Dan just said is, you know, there's, there's a requirement that the unit have a parking space. It doesn't necessarily have to be this parking space. So do you wanna restrict the alienation of this one and preclude them from replacing it? But if they didn't replace it, it'd be a code violation and there'd be fines and penalties and enforcement to make them come in and comply.
And I'll just add, uh, the requirement is that they own half of a parking space, which I don't know how you do exactly, but, um, in that case, uh, the, the applicant exceeds the requirement.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, any public comment?
Nothing online.
Do the applicant want to say anything? If you do, benefit brief.
I am Mike, I'm here to, I'm here to answer questions. When we purchased the unit, there was no parking associated with it, so we're improving the situation. That's all I have to say.
All right. No questions, no public comment. Can I have a motion? Come on. I move to approve on first reading an ordinance regarding a density transfer and rezone application pursuant to CDC section seventeen point four point nine and seventeen point four point ten, the community development code, to transfer point two five multifamily density units, point two five person equivalent density in the Mountain Village Density Bank to lot forty-two B, unit forty-one C, based on the evidence provided within the staff report of record dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Nassau Town Clerk, to set a public hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-five and with the conditions just stated in the packet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? None? Passes.
Oh, um, there, there will need to be a amendment. Thank you. Um, the meeting is not next month because of a noticing issue and it would have to be the, um, in January.
Okay.
So I don't know if that changes your, um, motion.
Can we just note that?
Excuse me, will we do? Okay. Uh, thanks. Okay. Moving on to agenda item twenty, earthwork easement.
Okay. So I'm still here. And I will be here for the foreseeable future. Um, yeah, so this next item hopefully is a short one. Uh, lot three sixty, uh, the applicants of lot three sixty have requested, uh, vacation of an earthwork easement on the lot. So just some quick background and then I'll share a few exhibits. The, uh, lot was approved for a single-family home and an ADU, uh, on September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Um, then in August of this year, the lot came through with, uh, for a request for a building permit, at which time planning discovered that, um, the approved patio encroaches into an earthwork easement that benefits the town. These earthwork easements, if you're not familiar, were put into place, uh, during the original plating of the town, uh, so that we could build things like retaining walls, uh, along the public rideways. Um, however, since the town has been developed, many of those easements are no longer necessary. We consulted with the public works department who reviewed engineering drawings for the proposed retaining wall and, uh, confirmed that that earthwork easement was no longer necessary and the proposed retaining wall does not impact the rideaway. Therefore, they approved the earthwork easement, um, for vacation. So we've, that drafted a quit claim deed to, uh, do the vacation and I will share my screen here to show some detail.
Is there anything controversial with this?
I, no. So I don't have to share if you don't want me to.
Just trying to move us along.
Let's not do it then. No, there's no, there hasn't been any public comment. I, I can't see any controversy. It's been approved by the public works department. Um, the claim is executed by, um, the town. It doesn't even require the owner to sign. It's just a, a, a quit claim deed. Um, so I guess that's it.
Any questions on the part of council? Anybody on Zoom? Any public comment? No? Okay. This, this motion is a little shorter than the other ones.
I'll move to approve the vacation of an earthwork easement on lot three sixty as identified in exhibit B, based on the evidence provided within the staff report of record dated November eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Okay. Oh, you're up for the next one too, Daniel. Oh my God.
Might as well knock him out.
Okay. Short-term rental work session.
Do you want me to present for Mike, Peter?
Yeah, if you want.
Okay.
I did, yeah.
Did I just X out of the, I'm sorry. Sorry, apparently I left the meeting.
Drew, any inter, introductory comments you wanna make while we're waiting?
Uh, we can make this one pretty short too, because we're not recommending any changes, but, uh, but yeah, we, we just wanted to lay that out kind of early in this presentation that, um, our recommendation is not to really, um, modify things as it, as it relates to short-term rentals. Um, I think you'll, you'll see our findings kind of support that, um, at least, at least from what we can tell.
Cause most of the short-term rentals are terrace, the terraces project, right?
Specifically in the meadows, yes. Um, you know, we do have six hundred and thirty-one short-term rentals across, across, uh, town here, so, um, but down in the meadows, the majority of them are those, those ones that are right next to big, uh, big buildings.
Which are private?
Yeah.
Yeah, none of those are.
None of those are deed restricted, um, and have long been kind of more premium property in, in that area.
Okay. Yeah, well, we can get into all those details here in a sec. Um, but yeah, as, as Drew mentioned, um, this is really a informational work session. We're not proposing any policy changes, um, but, um, we're here to update the council on the state of SDRs in Mountain Village and, uh, also the community. So, um, quickly just define SDRs in the code. They're, uh, thirty days or less. They're not hotels, so they don't, um, so they're typically entire dwelling units and they're listed on third-party websites. Also, the comprehensive plan defines, um, SDRs as dispersed hotbeds, which it goes into our overall count of hotbeds in the community. So how are SDRs regulated in other communities? Regulations vary widely from not at all to outright bans. Um, we looked specifically in Colorado and found that of twenty-eight towns that were recently surveyed, all require some sort of licensing or regulation. Most have a lodging tax that likely contributes to housing. Uh, many also have a fee associated with it, a specific STR license that requires things like detailed contact information and compliance with, uh, good neighbor prop, uh, policies. STR licensing, uh, is often used to track the units more accurately and also can be limited by overall count, location and proximity, which is, uh, for the regulation that many towns have used. Um, however, here in Mountain Village, SDRs are primarily, uh, or exclusively regulated by business licenses and they pay lodging tax. Uh, we found that there are six hundred and thirty-one current STR business licenses valid. That doesn't mean there's necessarily six hundred and forty-one active SDRs out there, but that's, um, the legal amount that are allowed to, uh, be active. In two thousand twenty-one, the comp plan identified that approximately a third of our hotbeds in town were SDRs. I, I think after this, uh, exercise, our estimation of that would be much higher now. How does that translate to, uh, lodging tax revenue? Four point four million dollars, uh, is the amount of lodging tax revenue generated, uh, last year. That's included of all lodging, not just SDRs. Um, so SDRs specifically are hard to quantify how much, uh, lodging tax revenue is coming from SDRs because Airbnb and, and platforms like that file their taxes in aggregates, so they don't break down, uh, individual taxes from individual units and they don't differentiate between units, say in the front's kilometer versus five hundred benchmark. Um, so we don't have a great data set to determine amount of tax revenue from SDRs. Our gut feeling was that it's somewhere around three million, but that's just an educated guess.
So from, BRBO doesn't give you a listing of here all the, here's the taxes and by unit? No?
No.
No, so. Yeah, so that information gets aggregated by all of those platforms and through, uh, the system that they report through, it just comes through as one big number and.
Trust me, kind of thing.
Well, and additionally, we have some hotels that are part hotel, part condo ownership, and not all of those hotels, when they rent a room out, separate out what's an STR that's privately owned that they're renting out versus what is a room that's owned.
Does it matter financially? No?
No, it's just a breakout, and it's just gotten a little bit more difficult since the, you know, online booking agencies have to remit, which is, you know, to be honest with you, our revenues are a lot better since they're remitting directly and the owners aren't calculating this and remitting. But our ability to separate out the data has become a little bit more difficult. But that previous slide of the four point four million, that's what we're projecting for this year. And that's sales tax revenue on lodging properties, not the lodging tax per se. And from our calculations, we believe that sixty-five to seventy percent of all of the sales tax revenue comes from STR versus hotels and such.
With a new hotel model where seventy percent are privately owned, right?
Well, and that's what we're saying. It just depends on who's actually doing the renting. So if the hotel property is doing the renting and they're collecting the tax they're remitting, if BRBO or Airbnb, they're booking directly through them, they're the ones in most of the cases remitting the tax to the town.
So we included a slide here. We wanted to acknowledge the commitment that the town of Mountain Village and the town council is made to affordable housing or workforce housing in the greater San Miguel County region. As you can see here, we actively monitor six hundred and thirteen deed-restricted units. The vast majority of those are rental units, as you all are aware. But we do have a hundred and thirty-nine other privately-owned deed-restricted units all throughout town. And that doesn't just include, you know, the Meadows. It includes units at Club Red. It includes units elsewhere in the Village Core. So there's a handful sprinkled all around in terms of other deed-restricted units that are out there. We also wanted to include the slide or the graph on the right. It indicates that it, basically breaking out our dispersed short-term rentals and the number of bedrooms that they have in them. And, you know, to spread that out across the six hundred and thirty-one known units that we have. And these don't include units at the peaks or things like that. Basically, that's nineteen hundred pillows that people can put their heads on any night based on short-term rentals that exist all throughout, all throughout town.
Okay. So as part of this exercise, we did look at the Meadows subareas defined in the comprehensive plan a little bit more closely as a case study for a few reasons. Residents of the Meadows, certain residents have expressed interest in regulations of SDRs and the possibility of increasing opportunities for full-time residents. Also, it's important to point out that the comp plan includes in the Meadows Subarea Plan an item that identifies exploration for short-term rental regulations in the Meadows as an action item. So we are meeting that action item here tonight, so that's great.
This includes a breakdown of deed-restricted units in the Meadows. As you can see, they're kind of spread again all around in the neighborhood. And as noted, this does not include the terraces, because there are no SDRs in those. Or I'm sorry, there's no deed-restricted units in those. I got that mixed up. We do have a number of units at Prospect. Well, actually, so what we've also found is that there are some short-term rentals that are down there that are kind of interspersed in a few of the neighborhoods. We could only find one that was a deed-restricted unit that was renting out their space short-term, and we're addressing that through a compliance process. So I know that there's been a lot of talk, or at least a lot of supposition around whether or not somebody's renting out a deed-restricted unit as a short-term rental. We just, we couldn't find it when we scraped through the data and did a lot of hand-checking on individual units in Airbnb and all sorts of stuff. So we didn't see anything that really jumped out as a major, a major problem. We also did talk with some residents down there. I spoke with a couple of you as well, just to get an idea of some of the concerns that are going on. And we did find that there are, there is one HOA at Parker Ridge that actually wrote short-term rentals out of their decks. So, you know, that's another way that these are kind of being managed that don't necessarily take an active hand of the town government to manage. So again, we wanted to break these down by percent of units. As you can see here, there's about forty-two percent of the SDRs in the Meadows are from the terraces. North Star, it's about a third, and then the remainder kind of, again, kind of scattered all throughout the neighborhood. We did find that there are thirty-six short-term rentals in the Meadows as a whole. There are actually three hundred and sixty-two total units down there. So you're looking at, you know, roughly ten percent of total units in the Meadows as short-term rentals. Is this one mine or is this one yours? Okay. We didn't get it completely ironed out. So again, this is just another breakdown of that. As I mentioned before, we did find three hundred and sixty-two units there. And you can see how it's broken out against free-market condos and those employee apartments. Those employee apartments would be Big Billy's, Mountain View, some other locations down there, too. So what we did find is that seventy-five percent of the free-market units that are down there in the Meadows are actually short-term rentals, which is maybe, I guess it's just a higher number than what we anticipated just because, you know, of how people use their units, how they want to come and have them available to them and things like that. But I think with the way that, you know, Airbnb and other programs work now, you can have a lot of flexibility for yourself as an owner in that unit and still be able to rent it out when you're not here. So we did get a comment back related to that from a person that rents out their unit short-term in another part of town. I think you all received a copy of that as well. You know, they just mentioned how it's a great option for them to be able to rent out their unit. Is this one mine?
Talked about this, Drew.
I know. All right, so what we did find in some literature out there is that short-term rentals have been cited as contributing to the rise of housing. And I think part of that, what we saw in the last five years during the pandemic, when there were a lot of people that were relocating, they were looking to get out of the city, things like that. And there were a lot of, there was a lot of, I think, confusion and a lot of angst in a lot of communities around that. I know that in other communities that I worked in, it certainly was a hot topic. Some national studies have shown that it could lead to as much as a three percent increase in housing costs. There is a study out there that says that when you implement regulations, it does slightly bring down the cost of housing. But those studies were done in large metro areas. So New York City and, you know, Miami and all these other kind of places where there's so many dynamics in the marketplace that are different. We have not done a study here to understand the impact of housing costs caused by short-term rentals. But I think what we've seen in the jump in housing costs in the last five years is probably more indicative of other things than just short-term rentals. We found that seventy-five percent of full-time residents live in deed-restricted units. That's part of our Housing Needs Assessment. To be clear, deed-restricted units cannot be short-term rented. So if somebody is renting it out, they would be in violation of their deed restriction. Thirty-five percent of the residential units in town are deed restricted, and those require that you work, most of the deed restriction requirements are that you just have to work within the Telluride R1 school district. And then these last two pieces here of information, again, the average home cost in Mountain Village was roughly two point eight million dollars as part of that Housing Needs Assessment. And the income to afford that, if you're looking at kind of a standard mortgage, is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which, you know, it's kind of tough to see how many jobs in this community can provide that kind of compensation so that people can afford those units. So one of the things that we believe is that due to this really disparate housing market, that units that are workforce housing, since they can't be short-term rented, we don't necessarily think that units that are short-term rentals would likely become workforce housing. What we're seeing is that there's just not the same amount of advantages for somebody to rent their home at an affordable rate to somebody working in the workforce. When you're looking at large costs, you're looking at larger units. That was one of the other things that we saw in those dispersed SDRs, you know, their four-bedroom-plus units. And so we just don't anticipate that if we were to regulate short-term rentals, that all of a sudden you would get a massive influx of long-term rentals or things like that. And the workers that are here certainly, at least from what I can tell, most, if not all, would have a real hard time paying that mortgage and finding, you know, finding ways to make that work. So in conclusion, we do not recommend any changes to short-term rental policies. We will continue to monitor data as we go forward. One of the really great things is that we've got some good information that came out of the Housing Needs Assessment that I think we can track fairly quickly. So we're trying to make sure that we're using existing data to improve our monitoring capabilities. I have been in touch with the folks down in Telluride, and they've got a new short-term rental program that they're hoping will help get their compliance even, up even further in terms of everybody making sure that they're doing the licensing and paying their taxes and things like that. Impact, we are, like I said, we will continue to monitor short-term rentals to ensure compliance and to really understand the impact on the community. We clearly know that there's a financial impact for having short-term rental opportunities in town. We see that, as Elizabeth noted, in the financials. And then last thing, as mentioned before, individual HOAs can adopt regulations in more of a context-sensitive manner than what we might do. I think if we came in and tried to say this whole neighborhood is, we're going to eliminate short-term rentals in there, I think that would be viewed as somewhat of a heavy hand related to these opportunities. And so I think that having those neighbors work with each other rather than, you know, somebody who may not know the context, like us, is probably the best option and certainly something that we can discuss with those individual HOA members. And maybe there's some technical advice that we can provide or things like that just to help them navigate that process.
I mean, this was hotly discussed during the comp plan. And so I think now having the data and your conclusions, I think, is very helpful. Any questions on the part of council?
Just a comment. I mean, great report, really well-done, really comprehensive, easy to follow, and it really makes the case. Thank you.
Agree.
Yeah, I would agree. It's a good report. I think it's very helpful to get all this information and put everything in context. I would just like to set a goal of a hundred percent compliance on the licenses.
Yeah, the data set that we get from Lodging Revs has some challenges in it. And that's just something that we've got to kind of sort through. But I totally agree that a hundred percent compliance. And I put in the, or we put in the memo that, you know, Telluride's going through their annual compliance process as well. And they were pretty adamant that they thought they'd get to a hundred percent because people really want those licenses. They're a little more, they're a little more of a premium down in Telluride because they are somewhat limited, and they're limited to certain neighborhoods and other things. I'm sure you all remember the conversations that they had down there.
Okay. Is there any public comment? I didn't see any.
Oh, I did want to note one other thing. It's noted on the memo, but Lauren Tyler, our GIS administrator, did a really great job of helping us gather this data. So Daniel and I got to reap the rewards of her hard labor.
As well as the new PowerPoint template, which hopefully will be the new standard.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Good analysis.
Yeah, just adding my thanks. Extremely important. Really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Board updates?
Was there anything to discuss on the two thousand twenty-six council schedule that was more informational?
That's the next one.
That's after?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to just follow direction here. TTV.
I think we got it.
We met, we met yesterday, the Finance Committee did. We're working through our budget, and then we're scheduled to meet next December third is where we're at. And Colorado Flights Alliance, we just received an update, so there's nothing to update there.
Good to have the Greensfelder and CFA together.
They align well.
Transportation and Parking, we have not met. Budget and Finance, seems like we're meeting all the time. GONLA?
Yeah. As I mentioned last time, we've really completed the work that's necessary to get, you know, initial plans for GONLA stations and so forth. The real focus for two thousand twenty-six, and you saw it in the budget for the IGA on the GONLA, is really focusing on all the technical work that needs to be done to get ourselves admitted into the CIG Federal Transit Program. And I just want to reiterate to anyone out there that I've had to learn as well, it isn't like you complete an application, you send it in and ask for a grant. It's, there's a lot of work needed to be admitted into the program, and then the whole thing continues, you know, is ongoing. So there's just a lot of, a lot of work. But our target, our goal is to have that entry into the program for two thousand twenty-six. That's where the focus is for the GONLA committee.
CC four CA? Marty, anything going on there?
In the last meeting, we decided that that was going to be a staff.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Thing. So Susan, you can take that off the council. Boards and commissions updates. And if Lauren has any updates, she'll let us know.
Okay. Smart?
Dr. Prichman, we, last board meeting was really focused on the SMART budget. I would have to say that for twenty-five and then projected for twenty-six, revenues are coming in less than projected on three A and so forth, other than real estate, to be fair. So we did have a discussion at the SMART board about the mill rate. We'll be deciding that at the next board meeting for SMART in December. But I would say the leaning of the board members has been to leave the mill rate the way it is, in other words, not make a temporary credit.
Okay. Telluride Historical Museum?
I'll just go. Quickly, we met at the end of October, reviewed how the summer season went, looked ahead at financials. We are working on a strategic plan. They did have really great attendance at the Ken Burns events.
I imagine they did.
And also for Halloween. That did happen after the meeting, but they're currently closed, and we'll be reopening December first, and we'll meet again in December.
Okay. Collaborative Action for Immigrants?
We met yesterday. One of our members actually now is part of the New Americans Community Advisory Committee, which is going to provide us more access to a lot of things. We also covered, we have a fund that CAFI manages called the O'Needles Fund. We got a grant for that in about, for thirty thousand dollars, actually, that we all voted to fund into here in its entirety. And this fund is really for folks that, you know, are going through financial hardship, and they can apply for immediate access to cash through CAFI. We also discussed our event coming up December thirteenth for Papa Noel, which is going to take place at the elementary school on the thirteenth from one to four, I believe. And we are redoing our logo for CAFI as well, so that was the fun part.
Okay, cool. BDAG, we did meet about a week ago. Most of the meeting was around the Greensfelder Report, so, which we saw today. Infrastructure Committee?
Infrastructure Committee met. We talked about all the usual suspects being wastewater, just got a status update. Nothing really new to report there. And we talked about Ilium, and we've got a conceptual design that's going to go out for conceptual pricing.
Conceptually. Okay. Telluride Conference Center. Want to take that one, too? Okay.
We're meeting this month.
Okay.
Okay. Miss Lanning's boards and commissions. Mayor's update?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out some events coming up related to outreach that the Tiret Ski Patrol Union is doing in regards to their negotiations with Telsky. You know, it has been, I think, pretty widely covered in the media where things are, but there will be one more, well, there'll be a negotiation meeting on the 25th, and then the final scheduled meeting is the 6th. In advance of that, there is a community coffee hour tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Wilkinson Public Library Meeting Room. Coffee, just bring a mug. And then if you're driving into town Monday morning, you will see union members in a practice picket outside the roundabout. That is not an indication that the union is striking. It is one of the things that the union apparently has to do for the NLRB as one of their steps in anticipation of a work stop if negotiations on the 25th and the 6th don't, you know, aren't satisfactory. My understanding is that that practice picket on Monday morning, starting around 7:30 a.m., also has a food drive component to it. The union is well aware that many employees have not started work yet and likely won't on account of no snow. And many of the managers in their onboarding have indicated to employees that they should be using the food pantries, so with that, Telsky has not donated any money to the food pantries, although that request has been given year after year. So there will be a canned food drive component for that picket event on Monday morning if you happen to be driving into town. I don't quite know how they plan to manage that. I don't think you should be throwing your hands at the union members, but hopefully that'll become clear, and that's all I got.
But, so is it the Telluride Food Pantry that is supposedly going to support the ski patrol?
No, no, it's the opposite. The Tiret Ski, the Tiret Ski Patrol Union is collecting donations for the food pantry because Telsky's not donating any money to the food pantry, although it's telling its employees to go there because they don't have work right now.
Is that something Mountain Village could help with in better communicating this?
What element?
Which part? Well, it sounds like it's, it sounds like there's going to be an immediate need, but I don't know, the plan seems a little sketchy.
So we're happy to take whatever direction we want from council. I have a real hard time having the town communicate out that people should be going to a food pantry when instead their employer, who got introduced people to come here to work, should be paying for them to eat.
But it sounds a message.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Okay.
But in the bigger picture, Mountain Village Grants Committee has historically given 100% of the ask of Angel Baskets, which is the umbrella organization that runs the Tiret Food Pantry, and I have been volunteering there along with Tucker's lovely wife, and it is a really incredible organization, as is the Norwood Food Pantry, which has a very significant need right now as well. And so I encourage those who are looking to make some end-of-the-year donations to look for either the Fresh Food Hub, which is Norwood's Food Pantry, or Angel Baskets, which is the Tiret Food Pantry.
Okay. I mean, my sense would be that the community would support the ski patrol if it gets dicey. Just they need to know where to send a check. All right. Okay. How about item 23?
How about it be?
Any comments about the dates that we selected? We did try to put an explanation if there was any kind of a change.
This kind of lines up with this year, right? Pretty much?
It does, yeah.
Okay. Any comments on the, any proposed changes or suggestions or? Okay, let's publish it and get it on the calendar.
All of you remember. This is your chance.
Do we need a motion?
No.
Okay. We ready to go to executive session? Another executive session?
Just, you don't have to read the whole list of things. You can just say the executive session items listed on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So I asked for a motion to enter executive session for items A through E listed on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was reading ahead.
Paul, before you run away? Paul?
Yeah.
Should we use the same zoom as what you labeled as the first executive session, or is there a second zoom that I'm not aware of?
You should have a second one.
Not for you, though.
Not for me, from Siri.
It's the same, okay, all right. I have that one. I just didn't know if it was replaced. Okay.
And we're staying here?
Staying here.
Recording stopped.
All right, so we're switching over now?
Yep.